Hello, I'm Andrea Mulrain. I'm with the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. And I thank you for joining us as we explore the candidates for Scranton School Director. This year, we are electing five of the nine positions on the school board. And the school board is what I always like to call an elected volunteer. So they're elected to serve us in the community. However, they are not paid for their position, for their time. We have 11 candidates who are on the Democratic ballot. And 10 of those candidates are also cross filed onto the Republican ballot. This is one of those positions in the state of Pennsylvania where a candidate can cross file on both political parties. Today's presentation, all of these interviews were put together with the cooperation of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and the Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service at the University of Scranton. So I'd like to thank all of my friends and colleagues for their assistance in putting all of this together. In addition, we'd like to thank the staff of ECTV for their time and their efforts in putting this forward. Also this year, for this election season, we will have debates with the candidates for Lackawanna County Commissioner. One debate with the Republican candidates, one debate with the Democratic candidates, and then also a debate with the candidates for Scranton City Council. So the overall way that we conduct these interviews with the school board is that we have a set of questions. Each candidate is asked the same questions, and they're allowed up to two minutes to respond to each question. And then at the end, they have two minutes for a closing statement. So we hope that all of this will enable you to be a more informed voter, and we thank you for your time and attention. We're joined now by Tom Borthwick. Tom is a candidate, of course, for Scranton School Board, and he is cross filed on both the Republican and Democratic tickets. Welcome and thank you for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
All right. So we're going to dig right into the questions, all right? The first question that I like to talk about is what makes the world go around, and that's money. So equitable funding from the state continues to be an issue. Please share your knowledge of the issue and describe how you can impact this as a school director.
So I can actually speak to this directly because in 2019, when I was on the board, we as a group began a very public fight for fair funding. I was even on the front page of The Times at a rally that we had. Three directors, me, myself, and Greg Popel, in particular, went to every single PTA in the city of Scranton, gave them a presentation and said, hey, the state is shortchanging us to the tune of at least $30 million per year. That was in 2019. And because of that, that's why you're seeing massive cuts in services. That's why we were put in recovery. That's why, you know, preschool is gone, libraries are gone. And all those things are obviously very detrimental to the city. So by having those informational sessions with PTAs and then also neighborhood groups, we started to basically kind of make a movement. People started showing up to school board meetings. People started pressuring their legislators. We, at the Tri-Park Community Center, we had a rally so packed, a rally and planning meeting so packed that people were out the door in the parking lot because people were realizing that Scrantonians are getting shortchanged. And guess what? Taxes keep going up locally because the state's not chipping in. So that started the process of the governor, Governor Wolf at the time, starting to inject like 3 million here, 6 million there. And bit by bit, since 2019, you've seen state funding increase to the tune of, I think it's about 21 million per year, year over year, because they consistently added to our year-over-year funding. So right now, the Scranton School District's budget is $222 million per year. It was in 2019 only $269 million per year. So you're looking at like a little bit over $50 million a year in recurring funding. And you're seeing that these people, that now that we have that money, we're able to do new things, good things. So I would keep that fight going because I'm a veteran of that fight, and I helped the district achieve success in that fight. It's one of my proudest moments as a former director.
Okay, thank you. The next question, an equally important topic, is safety. What is the role the school board plays in ensuring the safety of our children?
So it's essential. The school board's essential. There are two things that the district needs to do that they have not done. One, on the date of that terrible mass shooting in Tennessee, the board had a meeting and voted to table a $3.6 million safety upgrade, a contract to upgrade the safety of all of our buildings. Why they chose that particular day to do that, I don't know. Their stated reasons were they needed more time to research it. But they've been, the firm that has proposed this has been giving presentations for months. The administration has worked on this for months. There's no reason not to implement these safety measures like identification systems, like badges for visitors, doors that are secure, because a lot of our buildings are older and, you know, you need modern upgrades to these doors. So I think that's a no-brainer. And I'm glad they've done things like increased the SSOs. I'd like to see more SROs, which are certified police officers, as opposed to private security. But those have been good additions that the school board has made. And the last thing is our three problem buildings, really, are our middle schools. And they increased class length from, I think, about 42 minutes to 57 minutes to 62 minutes, depending. And you, first of all, you can't have kids sitting down that long and expect them to not fidget, or, you know, they're sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. But beyond that, they removed duty periods. So now there's not teachers or authority figures in the hallway. And those buildings have seen a disciplinary collapse because now there's not people in the hallway to discourage kids or to watch them or to protect them. And I hear from teachers all the time about how much of a disaster that's been. And you could actually track disciplinary instances, the rise, from the time that they eliminated those duty periods. Not only did they eliminate duties, they eliminated a lot of the arts, which is sometimes the only thing that brings a kid into school. You know, I think of my fondest memories of school, it's my classes that involve the arts, my music classes, my art classes, you know? And I'm an English teacher. I love creative writing. I love journalism. So that would go a long way to fixing the security and safety issues in the middle school.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
So the next question, closing a school is a hard decision to make. And I have a two-part question here. So the first part is what factors should be considered when you have to vote on a closure? And the second part of that is what factors should not be considered when you have to vote on a closure?
So I'm going to take issue with the first part of the question because I think it's actually easy. The answer is no. School closures don't help people. Unless it's falling into a mine, which thank God, we've moved past that in Scranton, then I don't see the reason to destroy a neighborhood school. And I'll give you a good example because I fought, I went to tons of meetings, rallies with a lot of groups of people, organized the neighborhoods to try to save Bancroft, and the board didn't listen. And here's what happened. They closed Bancroft, and they said that, they said that there's excess capacity in all the buildings, which is, which is a demonstrable lie because special ed children need more space than regular ed children, but they were enmeshing them in terms of square footage requirements. But that's the nitty-gritty. But common sense states, okay, you're going to close a building, you've got to move those kids. They moved all the Bancroft kids to Tripp. Guess what? Tripp is now overcrowded. So now they, they're moving fifth grade out of, they moved fifth grade out of all the middle schools, but also Tripp. But they didn't have room for those fifth graders at West Intermediate. So guess where they are? They're in a dilapidated, falling apart trailer park in the parking lot of West Grand Intermediate School. Of course, hundreds of kids are going in and out every day. They looked nice when they were debuted, but they're falling apart. And we're renting them. That's $1.8 million that we're paying for something that we don't get to own. $2.2 million was the cost to save Bancroft. Find $400,000 and save yourself a building. You know, the, now you have a dead building in the middle of a neighborhood that doesn't need to have a dead building. And how long was Lincoln Jackson closed and falling apart? So what factors need to be considered unless it's an absolute emergency? All the data shows, all the data shows that neighborhood schools are better for kids. And so I am 100% always in favor of neighborhood schools. I'm not closing anything.
Tom, lots of questions come up about transportation. And when I speak about transportation, I mean about getting kids to and from school. That's all I'm talking about. And this again is a two-part question. Discuss any changes that you believe are needed to the district's policies on transportation for students. And the second part, what factors, again, need to be considered when you're voting for change?
Okay, so in the paper, in the past year, you've seen that there was a complete debacle with the bus contract. And our recovery officer, Dr. Finan, had a lot to do with that in the negative. Her job was to come here and prevent disasters like the previous bus contract from many years ago. And we ended up seeing that enabled. And then St. Pete's Garage sued the district for bid rigging, basically. And the decision to award the contract to a company called Christ was vacated and rebid, and then Pete's Garage ended up getting the contract. None of this debacle should have ever happened. In the, in the court hearing, you know, it came out that directors and Dr. Finan were working directly with Christ. And Christ actually rewrote the contract to make it more favorable to them, submitted it to the district, and that's just what the board ended up voting on. You have to be able to read contracts. And I am a skeptic of everyone and everything, even myself. You know, it's always good to ask questions. And if I don't know legalese, then I'm going to find somebody who does and somebody who I trust and get an opinion. And that clearly did not happen with that bus contract. So what I think, in order to discuss or implement any kind of change, due diligence has to be there, and a certain sense of responsibility and knowledge needs to be in play as well. So that debacle should never have happened. And what we're, what I think we're getting at here is how do we prevent it from happening? And like I said, that's due diligence, making sure that you read the contract. There is no way any vendor in the district should be dictating terms. You could even see, like highlighted in blue, add this, and then the district just did. And you didn't have any directors calling it out. Do I think that was malfeasance on their part? Not necessarily. A lot of people don't know legalese. But you really do have to go through these things with a fine-tooth comb, especially when you're dealing with millions of public dollars. You know, it's part of upholding the public trust.
Okay. So this next topic is banning. And it's again going to be a two-part question. So what should go into a process or a decision if a call to ban books or critical race theory or anything else, anything that's floated that comes before the school board? What should go into a process or a decision for that? And then the second part of that is, are these decisions up to the board?
So I was an English teacher for 17 years, and I very rarely had to deal with this issue. And I would say the times that I did where somebody didn't want their child reading Macbeth because there are witches in it. Okay, you can have an alternate assignment. You can go to the library. There's never been a problem with our system up to this point. What you're seeing instead is just culture wars. And I hope to God that that doesn't happen to Scranton. And I hope that if it does, that we don't see administration or the school board fall into the trap of telling people what they should and shouldn't read. Because I don't believe that is the responsibility of a board. I believe it's the responsibility of the board as like the final adjudicator if there's a problem that can't be resolved. But really, if there's an issue, administration should work with the teacher. So as a teacher, as a veteran teacher, 17 years, I know what's appropriate age level-wise. That's my job. So I'm not going to teach something that isn't for that grade level because, A, I'm not going to be able to get through to them correctly, but, but B, I just, I'm not going to do anything inappropriate because I'm a professional. And I think the disconnect becomes like the idea that, and teachers have been getting, you know, attacked for years now. But I think not trusting teachers who are highly trained professionals. We have to get a master's or an equivalent every five years to maintain your job in the state of Pennsylvania. So trusting the teachers to do their jobs is really where it's at. If that can't happen because of a parent or a group being upset with a particular teacher and a particular book, then it goes to administration. And that really should be the end of it because if there's a kid that has an issue with the book or a family that doesn't want their kid reading it, that's an easy fix. Don't read it. Here's an alternate assignment. It's a little bit more work on the teacher, but at least you're accommodating that family and being sensitive to whatever it is, their personal beliefs, their religious beliefs, whatever. I don't think banning books is appropriate at all. I don't believe in muting ideas. You know, we're not going to teach Lolita to a kindergartner. And that's never happened and never will happen. So I think it's been an overblown culture war issue, but I don't believe the government should get involved in telling people what they can and can't read.
Okay. I have one more question for you. This one has a bit of an introduction, and then I'll ask the questions at the end. So per legislation that was passed in April 2022, the Pennsylvania Department of Education must integrate culturally relevant and sustaining education competencies into educator/teacher preparation, induction, and continuing professional development no later than the 2324 academic year. And there are nine competencies, and I'm not going to read them all because they have long names, but they're like, one's cultural lens and microaggressions and culturally relevant learning, that kind of thing. So two questions. What impact does or will this legislation have on our teachers and students? And what role will the school board have to play in ensuring compliance with this Pennsylvania law?
Okay, so two things. For the compliance part, it's a matter of directing administration to implement the law. So that's out of the way. What the value and impact of this is, it's very important, and I can't understate how. Because in my experience, so I grew up, you know, a middle-class, white, West Side kid. There's a lot of cultural experiences I did not have. And so as a result, you know, I grew up in that culture, and that's the culture that I'm comfortable and familiar with. I'm deeply interested in cultures that are unfamiliar to me, but there's no actual formal training. There was none for me before I became a teacher, or really even during the time of my being a teacher. So dealing with different Hispanic cultural traditions. And you use the word Hispanic as a monolith, for example, but it's not. You know, I learned from my students that Puerto Ricans and Mexicans and Cubans and Dominicans are very, very different culturally and even linguistically. And I feel ignorant that coming into the profession, I didn't know that. But it's not something I was ever exposed to or taught. And so by implementing these things and helping teachers to become aware of different cultural backgrounds, you can help these kids to learn better because now you know where they're coming from. And so what I learned throughout my career as I encountered different groups and talked to kids and learned about their values and their differences, I'm like, oh, okay, you know what? This kid's going to respond better to something like this than this kid would because of whatever cultural issue is at play. So I think the teachers can seriously benefit from that kind of a, of learning and professional growth.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, that's all the time I have for questions, but you have two minutes to speak to the voters about your platform or whatever else you want to cover.
Sure. Here's the basic thing. I'm running, I have two sons. My son Tom is six, my son Joe is three. And they were robbed of the opportunity to go to preschool. And that's one of the things that is absolutely fundamental to the growth of a kid, and nobody did it better than Scranton. And it was free. Find a free preschool. You know, that's not the case. And they're very, very expensive, and it ends up being like a quiet tax on people because it's come out of parents' pockets. But then you're getting kids now who are in kindergarten who are unprepared, not potty-trained, don't know their last names. And so now you have this massive disparity in capabilities that hurts every kid when they could have been identified in preschool earlier and given the services that they needed. So number one, I'm in favor of bringing preschool back. It's going to be foundational in making education better for everyone because they're going to come through the system and just have a greater basis. Next, I pledge, I'm not closing any schools. We shouldn't have closed Bancroft. It's caused a complete disaster in terms of space. So, and they're doing a building study, they're asking for four buildings that can go. We don't have the room to shove kids into our existing buildings, let alone closing more and shuffling kids around. So I'm going to keep schools open. And I want to fix the middle school issues by reopening, by bringing back cut programs like the arts and libraries. Because these things are havens for kids who are interested in school. I'm a product of that. I'm a product of the arts. I became an English teacher. I lived in the libraries. And now they're, they're gone. They're being eviscerated. So that's only going to hurt kids in the long run. So I, the three things that I just brought up, bring back pre-K, saving our schools, and making sure to cut those, restore those cut programs, that's a recipe for a more successful Scranton, and that's why I believe I deserve people's vote.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our time with Tom Borthwick. Tom is cross filed on both the Republican and the Democratic tickets. So on the main, the May 16 primary, voters on either party can vote for Tom. So thank you for joining us today.
Thank you so much. I'm honored that you had me.
We're joined now by David Bergerhoff. David is, of course, a candidate for Scranton School Board, and he is cross filed on both the Republican and Democratic tickets. David, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you so much for having me. Thank you for doing this.
All right. So we're going to jump right into the questions. And my first question, I always say the same thing, is about that which makes the world go around, and that's money. So the first question is equitable funding from the state continues to be an issue. Please share your knowledge of the issue and describe how you can impact this as a school director.
Okay, I mean, I understand that obviously money's, it always seems to be the number one issue when it comes to the government. So I mean, there's no surprise there that that would be the first question. I've looked into this issue as I ran for, as state rep, I ran for, as a state rep candidate, and I also looked at it regarding this position. And I'm not seeing a disparity that I heard in the Scranton School District as part of funding. I mean, we spend quite a bit here, we're right about at the national average, we might even be slightly above, or the state average, we might even be slightly above. Our state is certainly above. And the state, that's the problem on that point is, in Pennsylvania, we have a heavy local funding of our, our tax system for our schooling. And the state, obviously, we've been pushing to give more funding in order to reduce the burden locally and spread it out apparently over the state, which makes sense. And then obviously, you would want to have equal funding, the same amount of opportunity, and the money necessary to create those opportunities in each environment. I mean, every school district is different, different salaries, different locations, different regions. So we have to look at all these issues when we talk about funding. As a state rep candidate, actually, I was trying to look into some sort of school property elimination and find other ways to fund it. But it's like a $16 billion, perhaps even higher at this point, because I believe they just added another $2 billion to it. So it's, it's a huge number, and I don't think people realize that. I think here in the Scranton School District, we spend about 18,000 per student. We actually do a better job with our private schools and our Catholic schools, spending a little bit less money. The charter schools have come in with less money. And so a lot of times, we're acting like funding is the only issue. And in my opinion, funding is obviously the basis of what we do, but it's how we get the funding and how we spend that money when we get it. I really believe that we can spend less money per student, saving our taxpayers billions. And my concern, and why I say this, is because I see a projected 4% increase in taxation over the next four years with the recovery plan. If I had read it correctly, I only had a little bit of time to research it. It's like 50 pages, and there was a lot to do for this position. There's a lot more involved for school board than one might imagine, especially after being a state representative candidate to come and look at this. I'm like, these problems are huge. So there's a lot to it.
Okay. The next question pertains to an equally important topic, and that one is safety. So what is the role that the school board plays in ensuring the safety of our children?
Well, I mean, I think it's definitely necessary, and I'm sure we do this now. I would hope we do. I can guarantee we do it. First of all, we do the training of the teachers and the students. We bring in professionals to basically deal with anything, active shooters, fires, any type of emergency. We have trains that run near our schools. Definitely should be an issue that hopefully we're discussing and looking into, especially with the knowledge we have now, the 1,000 to 1,500 trains derail a year. And we're just seeing it in the news a lot more now, but it actually happens very commonly, three a day. So it's very likely to happen here at some point. And all the plans that we have, we should always reevaluate them, probably every couple months. And if we see flaws or if we have an issue, as I hear rumors out there, but I'm going to state it as rumor, you all hear it, I don't have to prove these things. It's what I hear. I'm out there knocking on doors. I hear that guns are getting into our schools still. That would surprise a lot of parents, probably terrorize you. I hope it does. There's obviously a reevaluation of some of the systems that we're using in order to stop these guns from getting in our school. I'm not sure our disciplinary action is meeting the needs of the teachers when it comes to just the way children interact at school, the way that the students behave with the teachers. And when you have that lack of discipline, that lack of breakdown, that, that just total disrespect for authority, that a lot of times I'm hearing that these principles aren't really reinforcing and giving the backbone to the teachers, you're going to have a breakdown in safety. So safety isn't just, you know, everybody's focused on school shootings, but it's a lot bigger than that. We had a, obviously, a student was killed just outside the Scranton High School. I've spent a couple of days here and there, sitting down at the Turkey Hill across from the Scranton High School because there was fights breaking out there. And I wanted to go down and observe and see if there was anything we could do as a community, plus try to learn what's going on with these students. And I would love to speak to them, but I'm not really in a position to do that. But I think on school board, you have more access to parents and students. I would have a lot more than two meetings a month. Personally, I'm going to hold a couple of meetings a month and hope that parents and students come out and they speak at my meetings. I'm not sure where this will happen or who will provide me the venue or platform, but we're willing to do that. At least I'm willing to do that. I know probably Mr. McCandrew and others on the board are certainly willing to do that. We need to put more time into solving the issues now before they become an issue that we have to resolve after it's a tragedy. And that's all I'm looking to do is get my foot in the door to start somewhere and learn the program so I can help improve the programs.
Okay, thank you. The next question is a two-part question. Closing a school is a hard decision to make. So the first part, what factors should be considered when you have to vote on a school closure? And the second part is what factors should not be considered when you're voting on a closure?
I'm not necessarily sure. There's no factors that should be considered. Every, like they say, every idea is a good idea. It's just not necessarily every idea is going to make a difference. So you have to weigh and balance the issues that come before you. I believe one of the schools that were closed, I want to say, I don't want to say the school because I'm not positive which one it was, but it was something like $2 million in order to repair the school and keep it. And $2 million doesn't sound like a big amount of money to me when I know we spend 50 to 70 million to rebuild these, to build new schools. And, you know, a lot of times, the problems that we see with our schools and any government facility or government building is lack of maintenance. You see that constantly cited, lack of maintenance. So we need to be more proactive in preserving these buildings in the first place. We shouldn't be finding out that there's lead in our water, you know, years after we knew this was going on. Anybody in Scranton could tell you, we don't have the best water system. And we should certainly be checking these schools for all kinds of hazards, water, airborne. I work in an HVAC-type company. We clean ventilation systems. We go into schools. I know what ventilation systems look like. And so I have a rough idea of what, you know, other things you could be exposed to simply through ventilation. Outside of that, you know, you have to take into account very specifically the neighborhood, the parents, the amount of students that are there, and what's the benefit of keeping that school open? I believe the one school that kept open, a little over 500 kids. I'm not a guy to save buildings. I always say, save businesses, not buildings. But at the same point, schools are a little different to me because schools can be done on a community level. They were done, we had schools in every single neighborhood back in the day. Now, we're not going to go back that far. But we can have more facilities. We should have more options for our facilities. We should have cyber schools. We should have charter schools. You know, we should have a mix of everything, and we should encourage people to go to our Catholic schools or our private schools. And I like the idea of voucher systems to ensure that. I'm not trying to take away funding from the Scranton School District. I'm trying to provide options to our students. It's really hard when I hear people saying, oh, you're going to hurt the public school system. Well, the public school system isn't the only system we offer to our students, and we need to offer them every option like everything else in politics. If we would stop focusing, thinking one answer is the solution, and doing all size-fits-all, not a one-size-fits-all, but at all accommodations, consider everything that we possibly can do, take every aspect, and put them all together, and you come up probably with the best solutions.
Okay. The next question, also two parts. Lots of questions come up about transportation. And by transportation, I'm only talking about getting kids to and from school. That's, that's the whole point. So discuss any changes you believe are needed to the district's policies on transportation for students, and what factors need to be considered when voting for change?
I mean, obviously, we had the whole busing contract issue, so hopefully, anything that we do going forward doesn't get surrounded with some sort of skepticism or, as they would say, unfairness, is how the judge stated it, was an unfair process. We obviously, you don't necessarily need big school buses in the city of Scranton where you can have smaller schools, smaller buses or smaller transport-type things, the vans, the cars, people, parents providing, you know, we have parents that do it as well as, you know, busing. We have the public bus system, which none of these things I can actually answer to because I really don't know how difficult it is to get our students to school. What bothers me sometimes, it's just a pet peeve of mine, is I see a lot of parents like sitting in their driveway, waiting for the bus to pull up. And then their kid gets out of their car, and then the bus takes the kid, takes them 15 minutes to school, and then at the end of the day, parents sitting there when they come back. I sometimes wonder why the parent couldn't just drive that student to school. Maybe that's just too easy of a solution for some of us, but maybe it's not that easy at all. I don't understand sometimes why we're just not getting our own students to school. But certainly, we want our kids at school, so any opportunities for transportation, we have to provide. And, you know, even as something as simple as encouraging them to ride their own bikes to school. And we can't act like our neighborhoods are so dangerous that our kids can't ride their bikes. If we get that way, we send out a mentality to our students that isn't good. I mean, we have a homeless camp, what, a block and a half from the Scranton School District, Scranton High School. It's a shame. We have blighted houses near all our schools. If you look at the neighborhoods near most of our schools, they're horrible. So to think that you're going to allow kids, parents see that, and they're like, I don't want my kid walking to school. So we need more volunteers with parents who will stand at corners, make sure these kids are able to cross the street safely. We need more volunteers to drive the kids to school if that's an option. I believe it is, as long as you pass background checks. I see the buses and the little vans and everything. I'm not concerned with how the buses are fueled, to be honest. Does this move towards green energy? Great, but let's, you know, let's focus more on getting the kids to school. We can figure out the cost of doing that, but let's come up with all the options again. You know, every option we have to get students to school, every option we can give them to get there. And we just, I mean, there's really, it shouldn't be a complicated issue. We got to get the kids to school, unless they're in the school, we can't teach them.
Okay. This next question, the general topic overall is about banning, and it's a two-part question. So the first part is what should go into a process or a decision if a call to ban books or critical race theory or anything is floated to the school board from any direction, wherever that might show up? So what should go into a process or a decision for that? And then the second part of that is, are these decisions up to the board?
Obviously, any issue like that brought up, and we hear it all the time, and we get a lot of misinformation, what's in the schools, what's in these programs, what they mean. Both sides do it, so we have to just realize that we need people there to get facts that are just going to be honest with us. One of the biggest reasons I'm getting involved in this race is because I hear all this misinformation, you know, like the kitty litter thing in the schools and items like that. And I told people, I said, you sound kind of silly, and it makes your argument look silly, and we're moving away from, we're being distracted from the actual problems with our school or their curricula and how we're going to correct these things and what the actual issues are that face our students. So there needs to definitely be addressing them, every single issue that comes up as far as banning books. We need to take these books. I've seen school board meetings where some of these books are so inappropriate, they can't play the verbiage on the news stations, on the radio. The school boards make the people shut it down. When something like that happens, it's a pretty quick decision. For me, that book should be banned probably, and I don't mean banned as in society itself, but maybe removed from our schools, not give our kids access. So we wouldn't give them access to porn. You don't give them access to books like that. These are common sense things, so you have to approach it with common sense. But you have to have meetings. You have to be very serious about these meetings. And I like the idea of surveys. I think we should really get a lot more input from our students and a lot more input from our parents. And basically, we at the board need to evaluate those things. I think that is important for the board, and I think we have every right. It's like when I was running for state rep, people are like, well, what right do you have to, you know, vote for this? Or what right do you have to make this decision? Well, you see, you elected me to do that, and that's what we're doing here. That's what gives me this right. And I'm not trying to say that I'm above or better than people. I'm saying you asked me to represent you, and you picked me because you know I'm going to represent you, and I can't represent you unless I'm willing to listen to you. So most importantly, we need to have lots of meetings. We can't, like I said, have bimonthly meetings. If you bring up a book or something serious like Critical Race Theory, which are very serious divisive topics, we need to have very serious public meetings continually until we resolve these issues and it's resolved well. It's not an agree-to-disagree. It's not a compromise, no. We debate and we fight this out, and we do it in a great manner with civility, and we come up with the best solutions. That's the best way to do this. We just don't do it enough in politics, and I'm sick of excusing people because we're so far apart.
Okay. I have one more question for you. This one has a little bit of an intro, and then I'll ask the question, okay? I'll put these on so I can see. Per legislation that was passed in April 2022, the Pennsylvania Department of Education must integrate culturally relevant and sustaining education competencies into educator preparation, so teacher preparation, induction, and continuing professional development programs no later than the 2023-24 academic year. And there are nine competencies, and I won't read all the names because they have really long names to them, but they're based on cultural lenses, differentiated opportunities, culturally relevant learning, and things like learning more about things like microaggressions. So that's the point of the legislation. So I have two questions. The first is, what impact do you think having this additional training will or does or will have on our teachers and our students? And then the other question that I have is, what role will the school board have to have in ensuring compliance with this Pennsylvania law?
Well, I mean, it's a law, so we obviously have to comply, so we have to make sure whatever programs we're instituting follow along the lines. What impact will it have? Well, you know, obviously, these are generalities. We're talking about, I'd have to see the specific legislation, the specific things that they're calling for. There's no problem with diversifying our education. We certainly have a school that's super diverse. We're like in the top 20% in the state, I believe, in diversity. We're way up there. We might even be higher than that. So we have a very diverse school, so our curriculum should be very diverse. And we should possibly have a lot more elective-type courses where, you know, students can elect to do these things and provide those opportunities to them. And again, we might be able to have people come from the colleges and surrounding if it's allowed, and they could possibly run these courses. Or maybe they can even, I don't know what the specific rules are, but can we offer these things as possibly after-school specials or after-school clubs? Everything doesn't have to fall within the parameters or hours of schooling because we have limited time to do these things. One concern I had recently, I just saw that they're trying to go possibly or considering, and I almost say trying to go, to a four-day school week. I don't think there's enough, there's enough time to do that because you don't have to have a class five days a week. You can spread out classes. You can have, maybe on Monday, you have, you know, a specific class, and on Wednesday, you have a different class in that same time slot. You eliminate a day, you eliminate the ability to really move a schedule around and have more exposure, more access to more opportunities. And so anything that expands the education, and most importantly, what I'm, is that we introduce our children to every aspect of society, every possibility, anything like, okay, microaggression or any other maybe terms out there that we hear quite often that people are just automatically shut their brains off to, maybe we got to explain these things a little better to our parents before we institute these programs. And again, this all has, we just don't give enough information to our parents, and maybe our parents aren't necessarily coming out to seek the information. It seems like we get aggravated about something. We come out, we speak about it, and then we go back home and we forget about it for a while until it comes up again or there's a major event, a national issue. It is the biggest problem in this area is we're so focused on national ideology or national issues, we totally forget that we're a local community, we all share the same background, we all share the same goals, we all share the same neighborhoods, that we need to work together here and forget about the national stuff for once.
Okay. David, that ends all of my questions for you, but you have two minutes now to address the voters, and you can share anything about your campaign or your platform or any topic that we have not yet covered. So the time is yours.
Okay, thank you. You know, it's odd that I'm running for Scranton School Board. I, like I said, I had just run for state representative, and a lot of people might ask, well, why would you even run? And I know people are going to make the assumption this is a stepping stone for me. Well, first of all, I'd have to win. But realistically, my thought always has been with government or anything else is, I feel I'm a problem solver. And as somebody who does house cleanouts, I clean out hoarder houses, I reorganize large businesses, I've redone warehouses by myself. This is what I do. When you walk into a room and it's so big and so overwhelming and no one knows where to begin, I say, start at the beginning and finish at the end. It's nothing to me, nothing overwhelms me. I mean, I got a little bit, I have to admit, a little scared when I started looking at all the issues that face the Scranton School District, especially when you talk to parents and teachers. And I couldn't possibly even cover one-tenth of the issues that they were concerned about. But, you know, obviously, student safety is number one. I did have it mentioned that we should bring back the preschool program that we removed. And apparently, it was free and not costly or anything. So, you know, I'm not going to ask why that was removed, but it should be brought back from what I'm being told. We need to address the fact that we continue to get sued for special education issues and a lot of non-compliance issues. Whose fault is that? I'm assuming it falls on administration, and they need to resolve that. And as a board member, I'm going to make sure that we get these things done because lawsuits are crippling this, our school district, and probably school districts across the United States. Oh, and also, I had people say that they want to restore the previous middle school schedule, and people didn't like the fifth grade being moved up to the middle school area. They want it back at the elementary school. So these are issues that I'm looking into, and I want more people to discuss those with me. There's obviously a ton of other issues, as I said. I mean, already, I'm warning people that I do see a 4% per year increase already figured in, and anytime we get people from the outside that help us balance our budgets here in Scranton, number one thing, like Pell. I can tell you, I don't even need Pell. You know what they're going to say, number one? You need to raise taxes. It's all they ever say. We have to find ways to cut. We have to find ways to be more efficient. We have, what, over 10,000 students, I believe, or somewhere thereabout in our school district? If you can eliminate $2,000 per student, which might sound like a lot, maybe not, doesn't sound like a lot, you get into billions of dollars pretty quickly. So there are ways to make cuts. We just have to be wiser, we have to be more careful with the money, and we have to really be cognizant of what we're doing while we're out there.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This ends our time with David Bergerhoff again. David is a candidate for Scranton School Board, and he's cross-filled on the Democratic and the Republican tickets. So voters on either party will be able to cast their votes for him on May 16th. So thank you again for joining us today.
Thank you so much.
We're joined now by Robert Casey. He is a candidate for Scranton School Board. Thanks for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
And he is cross-filled on the Republican and the Democratic tickets. And we'll get right into the questions. So the first question, you know, money makes the world go round. Let's talk about equitable funding from the state continues to be an issue. Please share your knowledge of the issue and describe how you can impact this as a school director.
Well, first of all, I followed it a couple of years ago, and I did a personal thing where I reviewed school districts of similar sizes such as Allentown, Redding, and I believe Erie was in that with the same population. Well, they had the same population, and they received hundreds of thousands and maybe even millions of dollars more than the Scranton School District. If I'm correct, this is a problem that goes back to the late 1990s, early 2000s, where board members were complaining that we weren't getting our fair share of money. And I blame the whole problem financially in Scranton School District on the fair funding aspect. Now, I'd like to thank State Senator Marty Flynn because over the last four years, it's my understanding that Senator Flynn has lobbied for the Scranton School District, has past boards lobbied for the Scranton School District. And over the past four years, Senator Flynn was able to secure for the Scranton School District over $25 million. And there has been some money that Senator Flynn has brought in and the board has turned down.
Okay. The next topic I want to talk about is safety, another important topic. What is the role the school board plays in ensuring the safety of our children?
Well, that should be their, one of their number-one goals is safety. And doors need to be secured. Principals and teachers need to be aware, if you see something, say something. Don't take any minor thing. There was often a thought of me thinking that they should work in conjunction with the local police and even have some priestings in open classrooms or in the schools. From what I understand now, they are investing heavily in security cameras and a security force, which I'm all for.
Okay, thank you. Bob, this is a two-part question. So closing a school is a hard decision to make. So the first part of the question is, what factors should be considered when you have to vote on a closure? And the second part is what factors should not be considered when you're voting on a closure as a school director?
Well, first of all, I haven't had the chance to tell my experience. I spent three terms in the 80s on the Scranton School Board. I have made the hard decisions, and one of the decisions that I always took into consideration, especially in the neighborhoods, I'm a firm believer that you should have neighborhood schools. I opposed the closing of the Prescott School, Adams, Sumner, and any other schools that may come about. Some of the considerations that has to go into it is the children. I ride down the street every morning and I see children waiting on the bus stops who are tiny tikes. I think it was a self-created problem in these schools that were brought about by the administration. When they took the preschool, which was 80% to 90% federally funded, there was no need to eliminate that. I'd be in favor of bringing back preschool. The other thing that they did, the administration and the board, was they put the fifth graders into the intermediate school. Well, you take out the preschool and you take out the fifth graders, you're going to have empty schools. I'd be in favor of bringing back preschool. That would be one of my top priorities, and bringing back the fifth graders where they belong into the, or into the elementary schools.
Okay, thank you. So there are lots of questions that come up about transportation, and this is a two-part question. When I talk about transportation, I'm talking about getting the kids back and forth from school, okay? The first question is, discuss any changes you believe are needed to the district's policies on transportation for students. And the second part is, again, what factors would you need to consider as a school board member when voting for change?
Well, some of the things that you need to consider is the age of the students, getting back to bringing the fifth graders back into the elementary schools. I think that's a must. You want your children to be walking to the schools nearest to them. What you need to consider is hazardous routes, routes that go by busy thoroughfares, routes that have no sidewalks where the kids could be in danger. Now, you could apply to the state to be a hazardous route and get funded for that. I believe the district's policy is 1.5 miles where you get bused. Well, if you have an area such as you do out on Capous Avenue where the kids walk through an industrial zone, that's, that has to be looked at and that has to be addressed. I believe it already is. I'm only using that as an example.
Okay. So this next topic is about banning something. So we're going to, again, a two-part question. So what should go into a process or a decision if a call to ban books or critical race theory or banning anything in particular comes up from, is floated in front of the school board from any direction, wherever it comes from? What should go into the process for that particular decision? And are these decisions actually up to the school board?
You know, that's a very good question because I sit at night and I see where this district or this area may ban books, especially in Florida. We're there to educate, and if we start educating or banning certain education, then we're on a slippery slope. Each issue should be addressed with common sense, such as you have the right to free speech, but you don't go yelling fire in a theater. You need to approach every issue, no matter what it is, banning sports, transportation, you need to bring common sense into the equation. So each, each issue is actually different. Is it the school board's responsibility? Bottom line is, the school board is responsible for everything, from making policy all the way down to the, whether or not the schools are clean, are the route safety for transportation. I got to be honest with you, when it comes to banning, I'm pretty much against banning books because we're in the educational process. And when you're banning books, you're taking away education. And a lot of the education, especially in books, is our history. And if we don't know where we've been, we don't know where we're going.
Okay, thank you. So Bob, this next question is the last one that I have for you, has a bit of an introduction, and then I'll ask the question at the end, okay? Per legislation that was passed in Pennsylvania in April of 2022, the Pennsylvania Department of Education must integrate culturally relevant and sustaining education competencies into teacher preparation, induction, and continuing professional development no later than the 23-24 academic year. And there are nine competencies, and I'm not going to read them all because they have pretty long names, but it's things like reflecting on one's cultural lens, equitable and differentiated opportunities, culturally relevant learning, learning about microaggressions, those kinds of things. So this is about teacher education, teacher professional development. Two questions that I have for you on this one is, what impact does or will this rule, this law from Pennsylvania, have on our teachers and students? And what role will the school board have or play in ensuring compliance with Pennsylvania law?
Well, first of all, the compliance is an administrative function. If it's not working properly, then they bring it to the board. The board on this issue should be the last step. As far as educating our teachers in further education, I'm all for that. You have doctors who have to go and get more training. You have electricians who belong to the union. They have to get more training. Our teachers are professionals. They should be treated as such. And the training only enhances our educational process.
Okay. Bob, unfortunately, those are all the questions that I have time for, but you have two minutes to talk to the voters and let them know anything about your campaign.
Okay, well, first of all, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a graduate of Scranton Tech High School. I graduated from Marywood College in 1976 with a degree in business administration. My professional career, I spent 18 years as the director of purchasing, where I wrote, bid, and oversaw contracts, the purchasing of procurement. And I also oversaw our inventory system for a 260-bed nursing home. One of my main concerns is bringing the fifth graders back into the elementary schools, reestablishing our fine preschool program. What people don't realize is, when you close a neighborhood school, it not only affects people who have children in school, but it also affects the local residents. Because if you don't have a neighborhood school or a school close by, your property goes down, value goes down, because people don't want to buy in an area that they can't get their kids to school without taking a bus, or they don't want to ship their kids across town.
Okay. That concludes our time with Bob Casey, who is a candidate for Scranton School Board. And Bob is cross-filled on both the Republican and the Democratic tickets, so people in both parties will be able to vote for him on May 16th. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the Lackawanna County League of Women's Voters for having me here to share my opinions.
Thanks, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Joining us now is Carol Cleary. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you.
Carol is a candidate, of course, for Scranton School Board and is a current school board member.
Correct.
So, running for election because you were appointed to the current position.
Correct, in January of '22.
Okay. And Carol is cross-filled on both the Republican and Democratic tickets. So, we're going to get right into the questions. And the first question that I have talks about money, the thing that makes the world go around. Equitable funding from the state continues to be an issue. Please share your knowledge of the issue and describe how you can impact this as a school director.
Well, advocacy is number one, because we have to advocate for our district, our students, our faculty, our taxpayers. We have been in contact with, sorry, our legislatures. They're very pro-education, you know, Senator Flynn and Dunnehew. But we have to work at trying to get what's fair for our students. We've been underfunded for decades. And it's not just us, many districts have been underfunded. Some districts have been funded fairly, but there's many, probably about forty percent that have been not funded fairly. So, we just had that lawsuit. It was in our favor. So, it still has to go through the legislature, you know, to, for them to figure out what the formula will look like and how the monies will look like. I know Governor Shapiro is very pro-education. He did increase our budget by 2.5 million, so it's a little bit higher, but it's going to take, and that's for the budget that hasn't completely gone through in June. But it will take several years to hopefully finally hit the level that we should have been getting all along.
Okay. The next question is equally important as money, and that is safety. What is the role the school board plays in ensuring the safety of our children?
Safety is key. As we know today, there's a lot of tragedies that have been happened, not just in schools. You know, it all started back in 99 with Columbine, and we thought that was an isolated incident, and as we know today, it was not. So, our safety is very important. In the last, within the last year, we've hired a director of security and safety, very talented man. He's really, and he's got to build our security from the ground up because we really didn't have very much. So, I don't want to go into too many details because it does involve safety and security, but safety and security is vital. I mean, it's vital from, our kids need to be safe. Our parents need to know they're sending their students to school and that they're going to be safe. And if something does happen, that we have the procedures in place to protect them and to protect our faculty. So, safety is vital. I mean, I don't want to say too much because I don't want to talk about some of the things that we're trying to do, because we really can't talk about it in public because it involves safety. But, you know, I am pro-safety. I have a son in law enforcement, so I understand a lot of the difficulties that our community faces. So, that's where we're at. Safety is very important.
All right. Lots of questions come up about transportation. And when I'm talking about transportation, I mean about getting the kids back and forth to school. So, this is a two-part question. Discuss any changes that you believe are needed to the district's policies on transportation for students. And the second part that we want you to answer is, what factors need to be considered when you're voting for change?
In regards to transportation?
Just this, yep.
Okay.
In regards to getting the kids back and forth to school.
Well, transportation, in my opinion, has been a huge issue in the city of Scranton as long as I have lived here. It always shocked me, going back to when I first came to Scranton, which was over forty years ago, that we didn't transport our high school students to school. Unfortunately, you know, we are subsidized by the state. They have a formula that they use to subsidize districts. Some of the, part of the formula is the distance that the buses drive, the age of the buses, things like that. So, because our runs are shorter, we technically get less subsidies in some of the maybe rural communities because they might drive eight miles to get the students to school. The bus routes might be twenty-two miles. The state has in place that children can walk up to 1.5 miles, which I think for possibly a secondary student, that is not dangerous. However, I think for an elementary school student, that, I wouldn't send my kindergartner, you know, to walk a mile and a half, no matter how safe the route was. So, transportation has always been a problem, but unfortunately, the state's busing and their transportation code goes back to 1949. In 1949, there was always somebody at home. We don't have, that's not the situation we are today. I would really like to, and it's kind of on my list somewhere if I get re-elected, and I have some time to possibly address that with the state, and maybe have the state, if we can, relook at that, because I don't know that that's, that's what we need in the 21st century for our students. And I'm sorry, I'm not sure. Could you repeat the second question, Andrea?
No, that was all part of it.
Oh, did I cover everything?
Yes, I think so, and I think--
Missed number three.
Oh, we missed number three. So sorry.
Okay.
All right. Oh, I did, didn't I? Okay. So, out of order a little bit, but yeah.
That's okay.
And did Carol finish her time on that question?
Yeah, we're at it.
Okay, all right.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So, the, I should keep my glasses on all the time, right? So, the number three is, and again, this is a two-part question. Closing a school, as you know, is a hard decision to make. What factors should be considered when you have to vote on a closure? And then the other side of that is, what factors should not be considered when you're voting on a closure?
No matter what the board decides, there are going to be unhappy people. When we had our town halls in the fall, I had people approach me and say, of course you have to close schools. That's ridiculous that you wouldn't. Then I had other people approach me and say, you can close schools. So, we know whatever decision we make, there's going to be unhappy people. I think there's a lot of factors you have to look at. I think you have to look at our population. We have to look at, you know, when all of the studies are showing that we're moving more into a decline than a growth, I'd love to see the population of our students grow, but all of the studies we have indicate that that's not going to happen. So, to have schools that are partially empty isn't financially sound. But I also think that we have to look at placing all of our students at the closest school possible and into more neighborhood schools. When you look at how the schools are structured today and where the placement of students are, it's illogical. There are students that are being bused that are closer to other schools. So, we look, we need to look at redistribution. So, we need to look at redistribution. We need to look at finances. We need to look at taxes, fair funding, the age of the buildings, how much money is going to be needed to bring the buildings up to, you know, ADA compliance and to the 21st century. I mean, we have some beautiful buildings, so I hate to see us close them. Maybe we need to step back and relook at how we're going to utilize them. That's another piece of it. And I don't want to get into too specifics because I'm just not really sure. They have a committee now that's working on where, what we're going to be given to move forward. So, but those are some of the things that we need to look at. And no one, not everyone's going to be happy with whatever decision. And it's a difficult decision because nobody wants to close schools. But you also have to look at what is the best now and moving forward. In the past, what happened is they closed buildings because they were in such needy repair, and it appeared that there was no plan in place. So, the way the schools are set up, they're not set up in the best way based on our population and where students live.
Okay. All right. The next question, the general topic overall is about banning. And it's, again, a two-part question. So, what should go into a process or a decision if a call to ban books, or critical race theory, or anything else is floated to the school board from whatever direction it comes from? And then the second part of that is, are these decisions up to the board?
Well, critical race theory is more of a college-level course, so I don't know why it would have a place in elementary, middle school, and secondary. It's currently not something that is being taught, and I don't think it's something that belongs in K to 12, because it's something that's taught more on the college level. Banning books, was that the other part of the question? Banning books. I don't believe in banning books, I'll be honest. I think that we live in a free society. We live in a society where, you know, we have free speech. And I think that students are interested in a variety of topics, and we need to make that available to students to the best of our ability. Now, if the parents wanted to see the books were transparent, I wouldn't have a problem with parents viewing our libraries and seeing what books were available. But I think a lot of that comes between a parent and a student. You know, if there's something that you don't want your child to read, as a parent, you have the right to say to them, I would prefer you not get books on that. But there are other parents that may prefer their children read books on that. So, I don't know that there's a one-stop shop when it comes to, you know, banning books. I don't see a need for it, really.
Okay. One more question for you. This one has a bit of an introduction, just so people understand what I'm asking, and then I'll ask the question, okay? Per legislation that was passed in April of 2022, the Pennsylvania Department of Education must integrate culturally relevant and sustaining education competencies into educator, teacher preparation, induction, and continuing professional development no later than the 23, 24 academic year. And there are nine competencies, and I'm not going to read them all because they have some really long names, but they're things about like one's cultural lens, and about culturally relevant learning, and about micro, educating about microaggressions and things like that. So, that's the law. The questions that I have, again, a two-parter, is what impact does or will this have on our teachers and our students, if any? And what role will the school board have in ensuring compliance with this Pennsylvania law?
The Pennsylvania Department of Education places a large amount of mandates on schools. There are also many mandates as far as what teachers need to be educated on yearly or trained on yearly. I think all training is good. I think our society has changed, Scranton society has changed dramatically, so I think there's always room for growth and checking your biases and some of the things, the very complicated issues that they incorporated there. The only problem that I see is it's getting more and more difficult. There's so many mandated trainings, you know, that it's getting more and more difficult for all districts to get them or have enough time in our schedules, along with teaching children, for those trainings. But if the state mandates it, then we will have to do the best we can in getting that mandate, getting the training, and whatever the hours they require in because they're mandating it. So, and I don't think, like I said, I don't think training is bad. I think training is a great thing. It's just getting cumbersome. Now, as far as the school board, we have to make sure that the administration, you know, gets those mandates into their schedules. And that whatever's required by the state, we meet those requirements.
Okay. Carol, unfortunately, that ends the time that I have for questions, but you have two minutes to speak to the voters about your campaign or anything else you want to address.
Okay. Well, I wanted to maybe touch a little bit on my background. I came to Scranton to go to Marywood University, and here I am. I never left. You know, you fall in love, you get married, and you have some kids, and you make it your life. And I love Scranton. I could have moved and left. We chose to stay. We chose to build a home here because, you know, we're both dedicated to the city. I worked outside the community for twenty, almost twenty-seven years in Stroudsburg as a school counselor. People say to me all the time, why do you want to run for school board? And I said, I always felt the draw to work civically. You know, I did a lot when my kids were little, as you know. You know, we were in Boy Scouts and football and baseball, and we had three sons, so we did everything boy-related, scouts, you know, the whole nine yards. But I always had that draw to want to do something civically. So, once I finished working a few years back and an opening came on the school board, this is my wheelhouse. This is something I know. This is something I understand. I gave my heart and soul to Stroudsburg for almost twenty-seven years. I'd like to give my heart and soul to my own community. I believe in, you know, working on our kids' mental health, obviously academic achievement, you know, that's vital. But I also have a very strong, and I'm very passionate about career development. My career didn't start out that way, but over those years, it kind of evolved into being a big pro-career-development person, because I think if kids find a purpose, it answers a lot of their concerns. Like, they get connected. And I think getting connected to your community, and as you get older, you know, they kind of evolve. And there's a lot of, there's career standards now that take us down to, you know, like third grade, where we start introducing careers. And I always say, I don't know, I don't expect them to say, I'm going to be a nurse, but I'd like to be involved in health science, or I'd like to be involved in business, or I like something hands-on. So, to just get them to start thinking about their future, because they're our future. You know, I have four grandchildren. I have three children. I have three daughter-in-laws. I want what's best for them, you know, moving forward. So, and whether they live in Scranton or outside of Scranton, we're all connected. You know, we're all connected. The outside communities, they need us as much as we need them.
All right, thank you. That concludes our time with Carol Cleary, who is candidate for Scranton School Board. And Carol is cross-referent, or cross-filled on both the Republican and the Democratic tickets, so people in both parties would be able to vote for her--
Yes.
--on May 16th. Thanks for joining us today.
Thanks so much, Andrea.
We're joined today by Sarah Cruz. Sarah is completing her first term on Scranton School Board, so she was sworn in in December of 2019, and this is her first reelection campaign. So, welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, Andrea.
So, let's get right into questions, just to let the audience know. You'll have two minutes to answer each question, and you will then also have time for closing statement at the end. So, let's talk about the thing that makes the world go around first, money. Equitable funding from the state continues to be an issue. Please share your knowledge of the issue and describe how you, as a school director, can impact this particular issue.
Well, first of all, thank you, Andrea, for having me today. I'm very excited to talk about what we've done in the Scranton School Board in the last four years, and about my candidacy. So, fair funding is the major issue, one of the major issues that we talk about being on the board. It is like what you just said, money is how we are able to fund our programs, run our schools, our bills. And so, we, first of all, what we do is that we advocate for fair funding by having good conversations and forming relationships with our legislators in Harrisburg. Actually, on Tuesday, I participated in the PSBA Advocacy Day. I had one session with a representative for Senator Marty Flynn, and another session with Representative Kyle Donahue, where we talked about some of the issues that surround fair funding, about how we need increased dollars, not just one-time funds, but sustainable funds, year after year, in order to really make an impact. We also talked about the Level Up program that we are involved in, as well as charter school reform. Charter school reform is so vital right now. The parameters and the rules for charter schools are so that it makes it unfair for brick-and-mortar schools to be able to provide for their students. And so, it also involves talking with the Republicans in the legislature, because I feel like the Democrats are for charter, are for fair funding, but it's the Republicans who are holding us back in certain ways. So, it's really making sure that both sides of the aisle are working together for all the 500 school districts in Pennsylvania, not just the ones that they work for, so.
Okay. The next question, something equally important to money, is safety. So, with everything that's going on in the country now, what is the role that the Scranton School Board plays in ensuring the safety of our children?
So, thank you for that question. So, last summer, we hired a director of safety and security. And so, he really has been a force in this area. His knowledge and his experience in this area is so in-depth and so vast, and he really has been a force in helping us create new policies, firm up our security measures. We also hired over twenty SSOs and SROs as well. We have SROs as well. And we have-- what do you call us? My goodness. Metal detectors at our buildings are high schools, Scranton High and West High. And also, every building is, has a system where, when a person enters, they have to show their ID, and it's put into a computerized system where they, where it shows if, like, they have a criminal background or who they are, and then they have to have a label that they have when they walk around the building, so they're clearly identified who they are.
And just for people who may not know, SSO and SRO?
So, SSO is, SRO is School Resource Officer, and SSO is School Safety Officer.
Okay. All right. So, this is a two-part question, all right? Closing a school, as you know, is a hard decision to make. The first part of the question is, what factors should be considered when you have to vote on a closure? And the second part that we want you to address is, what factors should not be considered when you have to vote on a closure? So, both sides of that coin.
Okay. So, the topic of closing a school, shuttering a building, is a very, very controversial one. Um-- one. Two years ago, when the decision was made to close George Bancroft Elementary, I learned so much about community input, about the input of other local elected officials, those from Harrisburg that represent our area. And it really was, for me, one of the most difficult decisions I ever made. So I believe when looking at whether or not to close a building, first of all, right now currently, what we have, what we have now that we didn't have two years ago is we just formed a Building Utilization Committee. When the district exited recovery at the beginning of the year, and now that we are in the monitoring phase, part of the stipulations of approving the amended recovery plan was the formation of a Building Utilization Task Force. So we created that in March, and that is composed of parents, teachers, community members that meet on a regular basis, and that in June will present us with a plan of what they believe is the most effective way to use our buildings, which we will tentatively approve in June. So I believe when looking at whether or not to close a building, you have to look at the enrollment as well as the physical infrastructure of the building. When I joined the board in 2019, of the vast majority of our buildings, which are older, 60, 80, 100 years old, were in complete disarray. And during the time that I've joined the board, we have invested millions of dollars into that infrastructure, so many of our buildings have been approved in many ways. But there are some who, that are still need lots, lots, millions of dollars in capital funds to get them to where they need to be. So I believe that looking at the factors, you have to look at enrollment, the state of the building, as well as what other buildings are around it that could potentially, that their consolidation can be. Factors not to consider, I believe, are, in some ways, pressure, undue pressure, or the feeling that you are essentially ruining the city or ruining that neighborhood by closing a building.
Okay. Thank you. So this is another tough question. There are lots of questions that come up about transportation. Again, two parts. Discuss any changes that you believe are needed to the district's policies on transportation for students? And what factors need to be considered? Once again, what should you be thinking about when you're voting for a change? So what changes are needed, and what should you consider when you're voting for a change?
When you say transportation, do you mean like, like the physical?
Busing kids.
Busing kids.
Getting kids back and forth to school is what I mean.
Okay. So what, so I believe in early 2020, maybe mid-2020, there was an issue of which students are eligible to be on buses and which students were not. And we made a, there was a letter sent out stating that certain students would no longer be eligible to take the bus, and that was one of the early controversies we had while being on the board. And I remember that it had to do, not with board policy, but it had to do with a state regulation that says if a student lives within one and a half miles, if they're elementary, or two miles for high school, then they're ineligible for busing. And then there's also other factors that take into it, if like the route is safe, if there's any danger that could be contributed to that route that also, that also added to it. So I think that at the, at that level, at the, at the state level, I think it should be not just a broad umbrella rule. I think it should look at each individual streets because I know that some streets may be within walking distance to a building, but the sidewalks may not be paved, or there may be some other, some other obstacles in that way. I remember parents also talked about the fact that in certain areas of the city, there's a high number of individuals who are on the Megan's Law list, and that was something concerning to them as well. So I think that's one thing that has to be changed that is unfortunately out of the Board of Education's control. I would love to see us to be able to have a more robust busing program for high school students. Right now, we do not bus our high school students, but we do offer vouchers, County of Lackawanna Transportation System vouchers, for students to be able to get to high, to get to the buildings. But I would like us to see maybe being, be able to offer them, because high school is such a critical time for students.
Okay. Thank you. So another difficult question. This one is on the topic, general topic overall, of banning something. And again, a two-part question, okay? So what should go into a process or a decision if a call to ban books or critical race theory or whatever else is floated from whatever direction it might come to the school board? So what should go into a process or a decision for anything like that? And then are these decisions actually up to the board?
These are really good questions you're asking. So first of all, I am a proud graduate of the Marywood University English Department. So when it comes to banning books, absolutely not. I do not believe in censorship at any level. I believe that books and writing is, and students being able to access books is how they get to learn. It's not enough just to read the books that are in the classroom, that are part of the prescribed state-mandated curriculum, but they should also be able to read books that talk about different cultures, that talk about different times in history, that talk about different lifestyles. And I think the notion of banning books is so abhorrent. Throughout history, some of the greatest works of literature were considered, were considered unfit for decent people to read, books like The Grapes of Wrath and 1984 and Fahrenheit 451. And these are all books that I loved reading growing up and in my college years, and I can't imagine anybody saying that students cannot read books. And now we have books that talk about same-sex relationships and people from different cultures. And I remember a few years ago, a school district in Texas tried to ban a book about the Holocaust. My goodness, like, how could you not, how could you not want students to read about one of the most pivotal times in our history? And with that, our district is so diverse. We have, the majority of our students are over 60% students of color. And to say that they can't read books that potentially talk about their cultures or to say that critical race theory is wrong, for the majority of our time, history books have been written by the victors, the people who were in positions of power, who wanted to create a narrative of what, of what happened, but in recent years, we're learning that not everything was exactly. So those two topics, I believe, are just, I'm against.
Okay.
Banning books and also not teaching critical race theory.
All right. I have one more question for you. Okay. And this one has a little bit of an intro as an explanation, okay? So per legislation that was passed by Pennsylvania in April of 2022, the Pennsylvania Department of Education must integrate culturally relevant and sustaining education competencies into educator preparation, induction, continuing professional development no later than the 2324 academic year. So this is about teacher training, and there are nine competencies, and I'm not going to go through all of them because some of the descriptions are really long, but it's things like reflecting on your cultural lens and microaggressions, understanding those, facilitating culturally relevant learning, those kinds of things are all involved in this. And what they call it is C R S E, culturally relevant sustaining education. So I have two questions for you. What impact does or will all of this have on our teachers and our students? And what role will the school board have to play in ensuring compliance with the Pennsylvania law?
So this is something that I, I'm very excited about, about this new regulation. So as I, as I just said in the previous question, the vast majority of our 9,300 students are children who identify as African-American, Latina, Latina, Asian, Indian, from the Congo, from Nepal, from Russia, from all these different places. And right now, our students who are so wonderful, our teachers actually, our teachers who are so wonderful, the vast majority of them are Caucasian, of European descent. And that is just the nature of NEPA, that our teaching staff comes from European households. We have a very small number of African-American and Latinx teachers and staff members, and we do need more. So I think this new regulation that will mandate teachers to become more culturally competent is really good because I think as a society, a lot of times, we're taught, we're not, we're not, we're taught just our own cultures, but we're not always taught to appreciate other cultures. It's very, it's very rare that sometimes a person will really engage and learn in-depth about another culture. And so I think that because our students are culturally diverse, it helps to have teachers who are aware, who are aware of that, who are doing their reading, who are reading, that are reading books that talk about different cultures and that are learning about their potential, their own potential biases. Last spring, I had the joy of facilitating a diversity and anti-bias forum with two teachers who are so engaged and invested in this area. I was also involved in the Equity Committee that we formed in equity policy, and right now, I am on a shared committee with the city that focuses on diversity. And so I think our position as a, as a board is to really ensure that our teachers have this opportunity to grow and learn in this area in order to become better teachers and better than they are right now, and then really connect with their students in this way.
Okay. Sarah, thank you so much for answering my questions. Unfortunately, I don't have time for more questions, but you have two minutes to give a closing statement.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Mulryan. I enjoyed our time today. I just want to say that in 2019, when I was elected to the school board, I came on at a time at the cusp of change. After decades of financial mismanagement and political corruption, I, along with a few other directors, were elected in order to be a conduit of change and reform the school board and the district. My focus from day one has been ensuring financial solvency, strengthening and implementing new policies and procedures that help us to effectively manage and run the district, as well as advocating for students who come from diverse families like me. I am the daughter of a man whose parents were born in Puerto Rico and a woman who was born in Honduras, who became a Utes citizen in the late 90s, as well as finally having good partnerships with leaders at other levels, leaders who work in Harrisburg, leaders who work for the city, leaders who work for the county, understanding and acknowledging that government doesn't exist in a silo, and all of the branches have to work together because we cannot have a strong city without a strong school district. The two work hand in hand. So I ask you today for your vote on Tuesday, May 16th. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you, Sarah. This is Sarah Cruz, current Scranton School Board Director, who is running for reelection this year, and she is cross-filled on both the Republican and the Democratic tickets, so people of both parties will be able to cast their votes for her. Sarah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're joined now by Mark Dennebaum. Mark is a candidate for Scranton School Board, and he is cross-filled on both the Republican and the Democratic tickets. Welcome. Thanks for joining us today.
Thank you for thinking of being, having me. I really appreciate it.
So we're going to jump right into the questions.
Okay.
And my first question is about what makes the world go around, and that's money. So the question for you is equitable funding from the state continues to be an issue. Please share your knowledge of the issue and describe how you can impact this as a school director.
I think it's not a big secret that the Scranton School District has been underfunded for quite some time. I think a lot of strides have been taken over the last few years to get that fair funding. You know, there's a lawsuit that apparently a bunch of districts have won, and now we have to wait and see how they release that money. Now, everyone I've talked to has said that the moment that that money is allocated to the Scranton School District, it's almost like a whole new world, to use a Disney term, for all the students and employees and the administration. I think it's imperative that that happens. I think that there is no doubt that over the last few years, learning has gone down and literacy has gone down. And I think that that money could be allocated to get our students back to the place where they need to be. I just read a study where it said a third of United States schoolchildren are not at the level they should be in literacy, and I believe that that is a major problem. So fingers crossed that hopefully that money is given to the school district sooner rather than later so that we can start working on a better future for our students and all of the employees there.
Okay. The next question, equally important topic, is safety. What is the role the school board plays in ensuring the safety of our children?
My mother was an educator in the Scranton School District for about 20 years, or over 20 years, and I think safety is paramount for all of our children. One of the reasons why I try, why I decided to get in to this process is because of, I don't know if you're, I don't know if you remember, but, you know, a young, a young man was unfortunately murdered last year, and that should not happen in our area. So I think that was an eye-opening experience for a lot of people to be, you know, safety is of utmost concern. There are, children are our future. They are the ones who will hold the torch for us going forward, and if we don't protect them and we don't give them a good education, we should all be very ashamed of that. So I'm very happy that, you know, they're taking school safety seriously. I think when you have a safe environment, you have a better learning environment because no one's nervous about what's outside and what's inside, more importantly. So I would absolutely be a staunch supporter of making sure that every child in every school is as safe as they can possibly be.
Okay. Thank you. This next question is a two-part question.
Oh, boy.
Starts with, "Closing a school is a hard decision to make."
Yes.
So for first part, what factors should be considered when you have to vote on a closure? And the second part is what factors should not be considered when you're voting on a closure?
I might ask you for that second part again.
Okay.
The things, so the first part is should be considered. I think the first thing that should be considered is to not close a school. Neighborhoods, my mother and father are both from West Side. They grew up on opposite sides of St. Anne's Street, and they both had their neighborhood schools that they went to, even though they were two blocks away. I think that it is a, why do schools close? You know, there's a lot of factors to that. A lot of the times, it's mismanagement or not playing with your money as you should. That is, I think that should be the absolute last option for anybody, any district, to do. And the second thing is what we should not.
What shouldn't you consider when you're voting to close a school?
That's a more difficult thing because, well, what you shouldn't consider is closing the school. I couldn't even consider what I wouldn't consider as not closing a school because you shouldn't do it. So I mean, I don't know if that's a really polished answer. I just, I just feel like closing schools is a terrible thing to do, especially since we got a lot of COVID money. And we should probably take a look at how that money got spent and where it's going or where it's allocated to so that we can best ensure that it's going to be spent wisely, number one, for education, and number two, for the safety of our students.
Okay. The next question is about transportation. Lots of questions come up about transportation, and when I'm talking about that, I'm talking simply about getting kids to and from school, that's all.
Okay.
So again, a two-part question. Discuss any changes that you believe are needed to the district's policy on transportation for students? And again, the same thing, what factors need to be considered when you're voting for that change?
I recently heard a story, and the story was, is that there was a friend of mine has, knows, has a friend who's has a friend who's, whose daughter has been to four schools in the Scranton School District in the last year. They keep moving her from school to school to school to school. I think because of closing the schools, you have now created a very temperamental transportation problem. I have a, I have a very good friend who actually does transportation in a different school district. And I've talked to him many times about how difficult that, that, having that responsibility is. I don't think people realize the burden some of the transportation companies take where, you know, they, they're still looking out for the safety of our children up until that they get to the bus stop. So it's a domino effect. So once you close a school, you have to find out where you're going to put those kids. Now, some of those kids are going out of their neighborhood and they're going to schools that they're not familiar with. Now, this example I gave you, this, this young woman made friends at one school, thought she was okay, made friends at another school, thought she was okay, made friends at another school, thought she was okay. And now they want to move her again. I mean, that just sows chaos. And the response that was given to the father was it was policy. I don't know the proper answer for that besides don't close the schools because then you don't have a transportation safety issue. These kids are unfamiliar with their neighborhood playmates. They're unfamiliar with their friends. And it's hard enough for me to walk into a room and make new friends. I can't imagine these kids going into a school trying to make new friends and then getting them taken away from them. So yeah, I'm, I hope that answered your question a little bit, but the transportation issue is a problem.
Okay. The next question, the overall topic is banning something, okay? So two-part question again. What should go into a process or a decision if a call to ban books or critical race theory or anything is floated before the school board from any direction, wherever it might come from? And the second part of that question is, are these decisions up to the board?
I, I don't know if this answer will be popular, but I highly believe in free speech. I highly believe in not banning anything. The only thing that gets rid of bad ideas is better ideas. And I believe that the political discourse of late is not very conducive to progress. As far of the book banning, I'm assuming you're talking about other states because I'm not familiar with any banning that Scranton School District has done. And I would, I would, I would highly be against that. I will put a caveat on that is that, you know, the most important thing is that we teach our children how to think, not what to think. I know it's a hot-button issue in America these days, but I think the more we can talk to each other, the more we can have conversations, especially about things that we don't necessarily agree on because somewhere in there is a compromise. And I think it gets very politically divisive when, you know, when one side says yes, one side says no, and then you pick your corners and no one will come to the middle of the field to shake hands and try to figure out what to do. I'm highly against banning books. Some of the things, I'm assuming what you're talking about, some of those things, the parents do have concerns and those parents should be listened to, at least hear them out for their concerns because then at least you know what their point of view is instead of thinking that they're something, you know, that may not be true. So I'm highly against banning books. I'm also not for giving inappropriate books to children. I think we can all agree on what those are. So yeah, I don't, I can't, the biggest fear I would ever have in my life is Scranton, Pennsylvania, to see people sitting around a fire burning books. That would be terrifying to me or banning them. I, that's, but I, I am not for that at all.
Okay. I have one more question for you.
Shoot.
This one has a bit of an introduction and then I'll ask the questions at the end, okay?
Yep.
Per legislation that was passed in April of 2022, the Pennsylvania Department of Education must integrate culturally relevant and sustaining education competencies into educator preparation, so teacher preparation, induction and continuing professional development no later than the 2324 academic year. And there are nine competencies, but I'm not going to read all of them because they have really long names, but they're like, talking about your cultural lens and equitable and differentiated opportunities, culturally relevant learning, microaggressions, so things like that. There are nine different competencies. So two questions that I have. What impact does or will this have on our teachers and our students? And what role will the school board have in ensuring compliance with this state law?
I think anytime you bring something new in, it's very difficult for people. It takes, it takes a bit of time for that to, you know, manifest itself into what they see as results. I'm not entirely familiar with that and I have to plead ignorance on it. Can you ask the first part of that again about the, what the bill that was passed is called?
It's called culturally relevant and sustaining education competencies. They refer to it as C R S E.
I'm assuming that's about broadening, broadening different cultures to students.
To teachers.
To teachers.
To teachers.
I wasn't aware of their ignorance on culture, so I don't know if it's an issue. My mother, as a teacher, the only thing that I can say about that as far as anecdotally, how I've experienced it, is that my, my, those schools had incredibly diverse people, different cultures, societies. I believe there's over 60 languages spoken in the Scranton School District, which is very difficult for people who only speak one language. I think it's beautiful to have, to be exposed to other cultures. I think it's beautiful to talk about different, different ways of living and different, you know, let's take soccer, for instance. Most, most, other where else places, it's called football. We call it soccer. I still don't understand why. But I believe it's incredibly important. The school board, I don't know enough about it to say how it would be implemented because we have so many different personalities that would be on that school board. And I just read an interesting quote that in, in the forest of 10,000 trees, all leaves are different. So we have to be aware of that. I believe having conversations with everybody is, is, is the way to have that be a non-negative impact and make it a positive impact on everybody. I hope I answered that right.
So that ends our time with my questions anyway. But you have two minutes now to speak to the voters about your platform, your campaign, anything you want to cover.
I wasn't prepared for that. I'm very, I'm not very good at like stumping, if that's what they call it. I grew up in Green Ridge. I moved to Orlando, Florida in 2004, went to, went to school down there, lived in Los Angeles for about five years, moved back here, started my own business. My mother was an educator, like I said, for over 20 years. I've been intimately involved with conversations amongst many educators about what they see as problems and good things that they're doing. I believe that we, now that we're getting out of receivership, it's, it's time to focus on education. And I think that that's the most important thing that we can do is to focus on education. We can't deny the learning loss over the last three years. We can't deny the mental health issues that we have going on right now. I believe in, in truth, this might sound very corny, but I believe in truth and hope. And I think that people need to be told what's wrong, what's right, and that there is a way forward. It's not doom and gloom. You know, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of people around here are very, a little cynical about the school board. And I would like them to know that if elected, I hope I can reduce their cynicism a little bit and they can feel really good about their vote because number one is kids. Number one. And if, and if you lose sight of that, I don't know, I don't know how we recover from it. Children are the most precious thing in the world. And we have to make sure that number one, they're taken care of in a proper way. They're educated and prepared for life in a proper way. And that, you know, they're not, they don't end up being cynical too. They need to have a little bit of hope.
All right, on that. Thank you so much to Mark Denenbaum.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time today. Mark is cross-filled on the both Democratic and Republican tickets for Scranton School Director. So people of both parties will be able to vote for him on May 16th. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much for having me.
Joined now by Catherine Fox. Catherine is a candidate for Scranton School Director, and she is cross-filled on both the Republican and Democratic tickets. Welcome. Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you for having me.
And we're going to jump right into the first question. And I always talk first about that which makes the world go around, and that's money. Equitable funding from the state continues to be an issue. Please share your knowledge of the issue and describe how you can impact this as a school director.
Okay, thank you. So just before, maybe within the last hour or so, I was actually on the phone with somebody in the district and we're looking to write an op-ed together regarding the level-up funding. So there was level-up funding within Governor Wolf's budget and now there's, it's not increased in this upcoming budget and such. And we really, level-up funding helped the 100 lowest-funded districts in the state. And it put a Band-Aid on an issue, but it did help. And so we need that help to continue. So what we're doing is looking to get the word out there that, you know, let the public understand why that funding was so important to us and why we need it to continue. Overall, we need fair funding, but that is, you know, a battle that will take a long time. As you know, the, the court issue happened and it was seen that it is unfair, unconstitutional that we're not getting the money that we need. But that will take a long time until we see the effects of that. So level-up funding has really helped and we need that to continue. So I do, I'm a member of Pennsylvanians for Fair Funding since 2020. And it's a group across the state of Pennsylvania that gets together, writes to legislators, reaches out to people, writes op-eds, things like that. So I, I love the group. I've met a lot of wonderful people through it. And we really need that here in Scranton and that representation.
Okay, thank you. The next question is equally important, pertains to safety for our kids. What is the role the school board plays in ensuring the safety of our children?
Well, the school board is guided by policy and procedures. So we have to make sure that the proper policies are in place. We are members of PSBA, the School Board Association, and they are always updating, they're creating new policies and updating the ones that we have. So they help guide us to see where, where we might have some flaws, where we have holes. They're always evolving and that really helps guide us to see where we need to progress in terms of safety and security. And then it's just making sure that we always guide ourselves by those policies and procedures, ourselves, the administration and the district as a whole. So that is where, where we, really our role is, is looking at it from a policy-procedure aspect and seeing constantly how we can improve and strengthen those.
Okay. The next one, Catherine, is a two-part question. Closing a school, as you know, is a hard decision to make.
Yes.
So the first part is what factors should be considered when you have to vote on a closure? And the second part is what factors should not be considered when you have to vote on a closure?
That's an interesting question. The two-part one throws me off a little bit because I appreciate that question because it does need to be acknowledged that it is a tough decision and that all factors need to be looked at. I'm definitely huge on that, on making sure that all information is in front of me before I make any decision, whether it's about a school closure or something small. That's our, our role as elected officials is to have information from all sides before we make a decision. So no one sitting in front of you should say, I will definitely do this or I won't do that because you don't have the information in front of you. So factors to consider is the impact on the students, number one, the teachers, the staff and the community. So there's so many factors that play into something such as that. For example, I went to Lincoln Jackson Elementary School and that unfortunately is no longer open. But I do see the impacts that it made on the surrounding community. I am grateful to see that the building is now on its way to being utilized. But you have to be realistic and that there's, it's a ripple effect around it. So you have to weigh the pros and cons and then you have to go with what is in the best interest of everybody, staff, students and community members. What should not be looked at? That's a tough one. I'm not even sure how I would respond to that because I don't think it hurts to look at any and all areas. The only thing I would say to that is I know throughout my, my three years on the board, it's very difficult to take the emotions out of things, very difficult. And I think, not that you shouldn't look at the emotional aspect of it, but you just have to try to level that out with everything else. So maybe not let that have as much of an impact as the rest of the data and everything that you have in front of you.
Okay. The next question is about transportation. And there's always lots of questions that come up about transportation. And I'm just talking about getting the kids back and forth to school. That's it. And again, a two-part question. Discuss any changes that you believe are needed to the district's policies on transportation for students? And again, what factors need to be considered when you're voting for such changes?
Thank you for that question. So I think this is an important question. And we had a lot of things that came up about this when we were looking to make sure that the way we're transporting students aligned with our policies. And we found out that they didn't always. We were transporting students that lived within the boundaries of what we were supposed to be transporting. And what I believe needs to be looked at is the state regulations of, so we get, we get money back for the students that we bus and we only get that refund back for the students who live within the, outside of the one and a half miles of the, of the building. And that is where we, as elected officials and community members and school leaders can advocate to have that boundary adjusted. And so it doesn't necessarily rely within our policy, which we can look at that more, but where the overarching problem is within the state. So if we advocate for that, it would not only help our students, but also other students in other districts. And that is something that I brought up when we were reviewing that subject previously, but there's so much that goes on all the time, that I really do think we need to revisit it because I think that that would be important. We know transportation, if a student doesn't have it, they're, they're very likely not going to school that day. Or if it's an ongoing issue, it can impact their overall education and we never want that to happen. So we definitely want to provide as much transportation as possible. So we need to start at the higher up and go from there.
Okay, thank you. This overall topic is on banning something. And again, a two-part question. So what should go into a process or a decision if a call to ban books or critical race theory or anything else is floated in front of the school board from whatever direction it might come from? What should go into your process as a school board member when you're making a decision about that? And then the second part of the question is, are these decisions up to the school board?
That's an interesting question because thankfully, there have been many issues regarding things such as this across the country. But here in Scranton, we haven't really had many issues regarding this as of this time. But I believe this would just fall back to really any other decisions that we have as a board, is looking at the whole picture and how it impacts every person involved. And to that point, is making sure that we're always staying in our places as board directors. We are not supposed to get involved in the day-to-day. We're not supposed to micromanage. Kind of, I think, I'm sure you've heard it before, the reference is always up in our helicopter to make sure that things are operating as they should be. So, and let, once it falls down to policy or procedure or somebody not doing a job correctly, then it would fall into our realm. But other than that, it would be, you know, up to the school administrators and such. But when a decision such as that would come in front of us, it's, it's looking at the entire picture, hearing everybody who has input, listening to everybody and allowing everybody to give that input. So for, for any subject that we have come up, I think it's critical to make sure that we give the public all opportunities to reach out to us. You know, we always tell them that they could come speak at the meetings and that they can email us, but I, I think they don't always feel that they're heard in those, in those avenues. So maybe more public venues for them, closer to their homes and such, and not just one central location, you know, when we have something very important that directly impacts them, just making sure that everyone feels heard.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question.
That was quick.
I have a little bit of an intro on this one. And then I'll ask the questions, okay? Excuse me. Per legislation that was passed in April of 2022, the Pennsylvania Department of Education must integrate culturally relevant and sustaining education competencies into educator preparation, so teacher preparation, induction and continuing professional development no later than the 2324 academic year. And there are nine competencies, and I'm not going to read them all because they have really long names. But they talk about cultural lenses, differentiated opportunities, culturally relevant learning and things like learning about microaggressions. That's kind of the overall gist of it. So two questions for you. What impact does or will this additional training for educators have on our teachers and students? And what role will the school board play in ensuring compliance with this Pennsylvania law?
Okay, thank you. So this falls directly under like our collective bargaining agreement. There is teacher in-service days and onboarding in the beginning. So it's just making sure that this gets implemented. As you said, it needs to be pretty immediate. So it would be in our role just to be sure that within those in-service days and such, that this is included and just reading the legislation and making sure every, every checkbox is marked. And, you know, I think anything like this is a way that we're moving forward. You know, this comes about for certain reasons and it will only benefit our teachers, our students and our staff. So just making sure that, you know, just like you said, this just recently came up. And then there's always, there's always new things that were, are requirements of us. So just making sure as a board that we're following through with everything that we're supposed to so that we don't, you know, miss anything.
All right. Unfortunately, that's all the time that I have for questions for you, but you will have two minutes for your closing statement. And I apologize because I forgot in the beginning to mention that you are a seated school board member. in the beginning to mention that you are a seated school board member now, and you're running for reelection. And this is the first time you're running for reelection, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So you have two minutes to speak to the voters about your platform, your campaign, any, any topic that you want to cover that we did not already.
Okay. So yes, I was first elected in 2019, and my current term will be up in December. I am hopeful to be successful to retain my seat. My daughter is in fifth grade at Northeast Intermediate School. My brother is in 11th grade at West High School. And I graduated from the district in 2010. So the Scranton School District is my life. It's all, all of me. My father's one of 12. Him and all of his siblings went here. My mom and her siblings went here. Me and my five siblings, we all went here. So I'm definitely committed to the city and the district. I did work at Lockone College for seven years, but I recently transitioned to my family business, National Bakery. So, you know, that's a staple in the community, too. So I'm really grateful and glad to be so involved in the city and have my ways to give back. And it's been a tough time. It's been challenging, but it's been so rewarding. I really don't know where I would be if I didn't win election in 2019 because I just feel like this is who I am now. It felt, I was compelled to apply for a vacancy twice before I ran for election. And it just felt like it's where I was meant to be. And now being in this role for three years, I, I know I've learned a lot. And that is the plus to being an incumbent, is there's such a learning curve when you have a $216 million budget and you have over 1,100 staff members, 9,000 students. So I finally feel very comfortable in my role. I'm always learning. I'm always growing. But I've definitely overcome those hurdles of understanding what is what. And I think that that is very important to continue us in moving forward. We need to keep moving forward. We recently did get out of recovery, actually a year early. We made history by doing that because in Pennsylvania, the first district to leave recovery, it took them 10 years to get out. It's supposed to be a five-year process. We left in four years and we are now in the monitoring phase. And we are doing much better than we were, but we're, we're not safe yet. Our general fund budget is only 7.5% of our budget, which it is supposed to be between 5 and 10%. I think people have a misconception that we're good and golden and, and we have a lot of funds to go around. But we have to be careful. We have to keep progressing forward and just do the best that we can for our students, our teachers, staff, and community members.
All right, thank you. That ends our time with Catherine Fox. Catherine, again, is a candidate for election on the Scranton School Board. And she is cross-filled on both the Republican and the Democratic tickets. So voters of both parties will be able to cast their ballots for her on May 16. Thank you so much for joining us here today.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I appreciate it so much.
So we're here now. We're joined by Roe Hume. Thank you, Roe, for joining us today.
Thank you very much for having me.
So Roe is an incumbent school director. So you're running for reelection for the first time, is that right?
That's correct. This is my first reelection campaign.
All right. And she is also cross-filled on both the Republican and the Democratic tickets. So anybody in either party will be able to vote for her on May 16. So we're going to get right into the questions. The first question is the one that makes the world go round, and that's money. So the question to you is equitable funding from the state continues to be an issue. Please share your knowledge of the issue and describe how you can impact this as a school director.
Well, I think this is the crux of all of the issues in the district. So many issues we could have resolved if we got adequate funding from the state. I prefer to use the term equity rather than equitable because to just give every school student in Pennsylvania the same amount would not resolve the issues in districts like ours where we have a high proportion of disadvantaged students. We get, the last count, somewhere about $4,300 per student from the state in the state portion of our funding. And the state funding makes up 38% of our budget. Many, many states in the union, the state funding for education is way higher than that. I think we're the lowest or the second lowest state portion of funding. That means that we have to make up that shortfall in funding through taxes. And that's really unfair to the taxpayer because we're an impoverished city and they are having to bear too heavy a burden. There are districts in the state that get $9,000 a student, comparable districts to us, like York, that we really hope that the recent ruling in the funding case trickles down to mean more dollars per student for our students in the Scranton School District, but also for disadvantaged students across the state. We didn't see an immediate major raise in the budget that Governor Shapiro has proposed to the level that we were all hoping for. And I think it will take some years for that funding to come down. But the ruling that the state is unconstitutional in denying funding to school districts to provide excellent education is a great benchmark. We get, the amount of money we get from the state in our basic education funding grant and our special education funding grant is, keeps us running. But it's estimated that we're underfunded desperately.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So the second question is equally important, and that one is on the topic of safety. What is the role the school board plays in ensuring the safety of our children?
I believe we have a responsibility within our walls to keep these children incredibly safe. They cannot learn if they're not in a safe environment. There are two threats to safety. There's internal threats that come from dismay amongst our own students and into fights between them and things. And we have a responsibility to make sure that every student and every teacher and every visitor and everybody who enters our buildings is not in a position to cause harm, physical harm, or emotional, mental harm to our students. The second range of threats and security come from outside. And we have tragically, given the light of the recent events, an incredible need to make sure that our buildings are safe for our students and they can learn with security. And by security, I don't only mean physical security, I mean freedom from fear. They cannot be in environments where they're afraid. So we have invested in this last period, we have created the position of Director of Safety and Security, and we have an extraordinarily capable person filling that role. We have invested in equipment at our high schools and our middle schools to some extent to improve the security against external threats and internal threats. We will continue to work on this because our job is to make school a safe place for our teachers, for our students, for everyone. And I believe that we're looking at the moment at some security upgrades. But what we cannot do is scare our children into being so nervous about what, where they are and what they're doing, that they cannot learn. Because that is our main job, teaching kids.
Okay, thank you. This next one is a two-part question, okay? Closing a school, as you know, is a hard decision to make. So the first part of the question is, what factors should be considered when you have to vote on a school closure? And the second part of that is, what factors should not be considered when you're voting on a school closure?
The major factors that need to be considered when you vote on a school closure, I think that word is a little loaded. Because essentially, one, closing a physical building is not actually closing a school. Because the school, to me, is not the building that they're in. But the factors that have to be considered are, how much capacity do we have as a district, or any district have, for the number of students it has? What are the projections for enrollment over the next decade? We have to consider the students of today, the students of 10 years from now, and the students of 20 years from now, to make sure that every student in our district has access to buildings and facilities that are fit for 21st century education. Obviously, if we have a lot of buildings with low capacity, we may be better off focusing on improving or building new buildings that are 21st century fit, to make sure that every child has an equitable access to really good standards. It upsets me that some of our students are learning in buildings that were built this century. And some of our elementary students are learning in buildings that weren't built not in the 20th century, but in the 19th century. Our oldest building was built in 1895. So what we need to do is take an overall look, both for now and the future, and make sure that the facilities we can provide to our students are fit for purpose, equitable, and every child has the chance to learn in a modern, well-equipped environment. And our teachers have access to the things they need. What I don't think should be considered completely is dollars and cents. We're not in the business of saving money, except insofar as we cannot be wasteful with money. We cannot spend large amounts of money repairing a large number of buildings if those buildings are only going to be filled to 50% capacity. And I believe that we need to look at a large number of factors, including community input.
There are lots of questions that come up about transportation. And by transportation, I just mean getting the kids back and forth to school, that's it.
Absolutely.
And again, a two-part question. Discuss any changes that you believe are needed to the district's policies on transportation for students. And then again, what factors need to be considered when you're voting for change pertaining to transportation?
I think that one of the thorniest issues we have is the policy that says if you live within 1.5 miles of an elementary school, we do not provide transportation. But if you live on the other side of the street, we do. And that goes out to two miles for high school students. Now, we do have a program in the high schools and we work very well to try and provide bus passes on Colts. We did look at providing bust, yellow bus, transportation. But the subsidized transportation of alcohol on Colts is working well. The issue comes back again to the issue of funding. Our transportation costs eat up quite a lot of our budget. And to make a change to bring that, that policy in to, say, one mile, is not sustainable under the amount of money we have in our budgets. We have demands, we want to get the duty period back in the middle school. That's a sustainable cost over many years that we can't just write a check for. Money we spend on changing our transportation policy takes away funding from our educational ability, our staffing, the programs we can offer. If I had the druthers, I would love to have a yellow bus pull up outside every corner of every street in Scranton. But we have such pressing needs in so many other ways. But transportation is one of those real dilemmas for any school board. We, we have had the benefit and we will benefit from our transportation company getting electric buses. That's great. We're not a huge geographic area, so we have to weigh the checks and balances of where do we put our money that is best for the kids.
Okay, thank you. This next question, Roe, the general topic overall is banning something, okay? And again, a two-part question. So what should go into?
Can you start that question over again?
Yes. So Roe, the general topic for this question is banning something. And again, it's a two-part question. What should go into a process or a decision if a call to ban books, or critical race theory, or banning anything should float before the school board from any direction, wherever that might come from? And then, are these decisions up to the board?
All right. Well, first of all, I'm fairly obviously a child of the 60s. So banning things does not sit well with me. I was out there banning banners to ban the Vietnam War. I believe that the role of the board is to allow the district to provide education for children that is based on a grasp of reading, writing, letters. CRT doesn't come up. We've got K-12, let's teach them how to read. Let's get them educated. Banning books, I believe that every parent has the right to decide what book their child should or shouldn't read. And I believe that we should be in a process of, if a parent says that their child should not read this particular book, then we need to have a system in place and a policy in place to accommodate that. I don't believe that any parent has the right to decide what another parent's child should read. I don't believe that restricting access to information of any kind aids the children that we are educating in their ability to get a view of the world which accommodates the great diversity of people and views and situations in the world. The narrower you make the education in a school district, the more trouble our students have when they confront the real world. I don't believe it's the role of the school board to ban anything, except unless there is something that egregiously, obviously is offensive, that a whole large number of people want to do, we should look at it. But our job as a board is to set a policy of education that allows the greatest freedom to our district to work on developing the day-to-day curricula that give our children a good education.
Okay, thank you. Roe, I have one more question for you.
Mm-hmm.
This one has a bit of an intro, and then the question at the end, okay?
Okay.
So per legislation that was passed in April of 2022, the Pennsylvania Department of Education must integrate culturally relevant and sustaining education competencies into educator, teacher, preparation, induction, and continuing professional development programs no later than the 23-24 academic year. And there are nine competencies, and I'm not going to read them all because they have really long names. But it's like cultural competency, differentiated opportunities, culturally relevant learning, and things about microaggressions, things like that is what's covered under this legislation. So two questions. What impact do you think that this legislation does or will have, both on our teachers and our students? And what role will the school board play in ensuring compliance with the state law?
Okay, well, I think, I think this is one of those laws that is very specifically sent out. And it basically means be kind to other people, learn about the fact that your students may come from different backgrounds, and be prepared to tolerate the fact that not everybody thinks the way you do, is my understanding of this. And I think that is a great idea. I think that one of, one, just to digress a moment, I would love to see a district like ours, which has such enormous diversity. We're a minority-majority district. I would love to see our staff reflect that balance. It doesn't, not for lack of effort in trying to recruit people. It comes down to, I think, be kind, see how different people are. To some extent, that can be trained. To some extent, it can't be trained. We're blessed with teachers who are, for the main, kind, compassionate, passionate educators. In our district, the professional development role is shared with the Scranton Federation of Teachers and our administrations together. And our professional development days have enormous amounts of mandated material to cover. I hope this gets covered. I hope that the concept really flows through. Our job as a board is to oversee and make sure that this is being implemented to the best possible ability of the district and the administration. How we would comply with making sure it was done, I have not thought about that because I don't think it. But I think that what we normally do as a board is we look at the big picture. If we saw a pattern of this, we would want to talk to the administration and get a process in place to discuss it as to how it could be better implemented. On individual cases, that's up to the administration.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, that ends the questions that I have for you. But you have two minutes to address the voters and share anything about your campaign or your platform, or anything we haven't covered.
Well, thank you very much. I think that this is a choice moment, or perhaps more aptly, a moment of choice for Scranton. The, there are five women who are currently serving on the board, running for reelection. I work with them all. We are passionate. We are a great team. Five strong, very dedicated women. And I think that we make a good team. And I would love to see the team continue to work together. If people feel they must choose between members of the team, I hope that they will choose to vote for me among their choices. I think that the choice that Scranton faces is to look to the past and elect people who were part of the issues and led to the issues that got us into financial recovery. I think we, I represent a path to continue on the progress we've made. In the last session of this board, we have got the district out of recovery, which is an amazing feat. We have done that as best we could. But the job's not over yet. And I would really ask people for their vote, not because I find that it's for my ego, but because I really... find that it's for my ego, but because I really believe that there is still work to do, and I still have a contribution that I can make to that work. We got the district out of recovery. We have spent $100 million on revitalizing some of our buildings, and we're going to spend more money in the next capital plan. We've enhanced our security measures. We've put social and emotional well-being right in the middle. I think that when something is working well as a team, it's not a great idea to change it abruptly. I believe where there is still work to do, I would be honored and humbled to have the chance to continue working on the Scranton School Board, and I ask people for their support.
Thanks so much for your time today, Ro. So that concludes our time with Ro Hume. She is an incumbent Scranton school director, running for reelection, and she is cross-filled on both the Republican and the Democratic tickets, so people in both parties will be able to cast their votes for her on May 16th. Thank you again for joining us today.
Thank you very much for having me.
We're joined now by Marie Merkel. Marie is, again, a candidate for Scranton School Board. Thanks for joining us. And Marie is also cross-filled on both the Republican and the Democratic ballots. So we'll get right into the questions, Marie. And the first one deals with that which makes the world go around, and that's money. So equitable funding from the state continues to be an issue. Please share your knowledge of the issue and describe how you can impact this as a school director.
Equitable funding is very, very important across the state, especially in districts that it has not been very equitable for, because we have a very diverse district. And I can see where some schools do not get the same thing that they should be, and every child should have equitable educational opportunities. And they can only have that when the funding is equitable for every school and every child.
Okay. The second question, an equally important topic, is safety. So what is the role the school board plays in ensuring the safety of our children?
The school board would review and vote and have discussion on any safety issues that are involved in the schools, have the reports from the safety officers in the schools and the principals, and then be able to implement, hopefully vote on any implementations that needed to be implemented in the schools to ensure the safety of our children and staff at all times.
Okay. So this next one, Marie, is a two-part question. Closing a school is a hard decision to make. So the first part is what factors should be considered when you have to vote on a school closure? And the second part is what factors should you not consider in making your decision when you vote on a school closure?
The things you should consider are, is there, is that, you should not consider emotional things if you have emotional ties to a building and things like that, if it's maybe something that you just don't want to see happen because it's just not a good thing, because it's an emotional tie. But you need to look at the, not, you need to look at all the issues involved with the school. Is it feasibly good to keep it open? And you really want to keep those neighborhood schools because smaller classroom sizes do help children, especially at the elementary level, learn better when they're in smaller schools? So that's very, very important. But it's also important to make sure the schools are up to code and are ADA compliant, and there's room that they can have the educational opportunities that every other child in the district would have.
Okay. The next question, also a two-part question. Lots of questions come up about transportation. And when I'm talking about that, I'm meaning just about getting kids back and forth to school. That's all. So discuss any changes that you believe are needed to the district's policies on transportation for students. And then also let us know what factors you believe need to be considered when voting for change.
A lot of parents in this area don't have cars. They may not have a driver's license, things like that. So if it's too far for a child to walk to school safely, they need transportation by the district. And that's a very important thing, because we want our children to arrive at schools safely and without any harm or any worries about getting them to school. If the district needed to implement more transportation, then that, the safety of the children has to be first and foremost. And we want the parents to feel comfortable with the schools and having their children be there. And we also want the parents to feel that we feel their child's needs are important.
Okay. All right. So the next one, the overall topic on this one is about banning something, okay? And also a two-part question. So what should go into a process or a decision if a call to ban books, or critical race theory, or anything else that might be floated up to the school board from whatever direction it comes? So what should go into a process or decision for that? And then the second part is, are these decisions up to the board?
I don't feel they should be up to the board, because education is, the teachers are already, are teaching what they should be teaching in the classrooms. Parents already have that option if they don't want their child to do something, like with testing and things like that. But if, as long as it's fulfilling the curriculum in the school and things like that, it should be, it should be up to the teachers, and children should have that access to learn many different things. There's so many different facets to our world, and it can't be, and I don't feel it should be up to school board members, because every school board member does not understand always what's in the curriculum. So I feel that the educators are the professionals.
Okay. I have one more question for you. This one has a little bit of an intro first, okay? So, per legislation that was passed in April 2022, the Pennsylvania Department of Education must integrate culturally relevant and sustaining education competencies into educator, teacher, preparation, induction, and continuing professional development no later than the 23-24 academic year. There are nine competencies, and I'm not going to read them all because they have really long names, but they, they're focused on your cultural lens, equitable and differentiated opportunities, culturally relevant learning, microaggressions, things like that. That's what's covered in this particular legislation. So the first part of the question is, what impact do you think that this legislation does or will have, both on our teachers and our students? And then the second part is, what role will the school board have to play in ensuring compliance with this Pennsylvania law?
It's going to have a big impact on the teachers and the children, because the teachers are going to have to have some type of training if they didn't have some of this already, especially the teachers that have been in the classroom for a while. They may have to have workshops and maybe webinars, things like that, to help them get up to par on different things. And the school board is going to have to be understanding of what this is, and then it may involve having training and things like that for the teachers. And to think outside the box sometimes with some of the things that you're going to do in the classroom. It's not going to be just a lesson. It may be an activity that's going to involve those things, which is just as important as teaching from a textbook.
Okay. So Marie, that ends the time that I have for questions for you, but you have two minutes for a closing statement. You can speak to the voters about your campaign, your platform, or any topic that we have not covered.
I am a retired teacher. I taught special education for 35 years, middle school and high school. And my three children graduated from the Scranton School District through West Scranton, from preschool through 12th grade. And my focus to run for school board is for the best interest of the children and the students in the district, but not only that, to make sure that everybody that has contact with our children is qualified, and everybody has the same opportunities and is trained and things like that. And I also believe that everybody should have the same educational opportunities across the district, and hopefully to get back maybe our preschools, our libraries, and any other programs we may have lost in, with funding and things like that, to try to make sure that our children are well-rounded and prepared for whatever they do upon graduation. And that families and schools can continue to work together, because the school that works together with the families is the best type of learning environment that we can have.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our time with Marie Merkel. Again, Marie is a candidate for Scranton School Board, and she is cross-filled on both the Republican and the Democratic tickets. So voters registered in either party will be able to cast their ballot for her on May 16th. Marie, thanks so much for joining us today.
Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity.
We're joined now by Tara Yanni. Tara is an incumbent school director seeking reelection. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you to you and the League of Women Voters for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity.
So we are going to jump right into questions, and I do want to also say that Tara is cross-filled on both the Republican and the Democratic ballots, so that people in both, both parties would be able to vote for her. But we are going to get right into questions. And the first question, I always say the same thing, it is about that which makes the world go around, and that's money. So the first question to you, equitable funding from the state continues to be an issue. Please share your knowledge of the issue and describe how you can impact this as a school director.
Sure. Well, anybody that lives in Scranton knows that the Scranton School District is currently underfunded, to the tune of about $53 million. So I, I'm heavily invested in this, because everything relies on our fair funding, going from our updated security, our updated curriculum. Everything that we need to do is based on fair funding. I just attended last week, there was a rally at Northeast Intermediate School, and it was organized by one of our seventh-grade teachers, and she had her students come out and talk about what fair funding would mean to them. And that was really impactful to me, because to hear it out from our students' voices to say, we need, we want more gym, we want more art, we want more music, well, that $53 million would give us that. I also sat in on meetings last week with our local legislators to speak with them about how, as a school board member, I can work with them. What do they need from me to advocate for this fair funding? So as a school board member, that's how we can impact it. We can continue to work with our local legislators. We can continue to listen to our students and listen to our staff of what they need, and continue to share that with our legislators, so they can take it even higher to get us that fair funding.
Okay. Thank you. The second question, another important topic, and this one is safety.
Okay.
So what is the role the school board plays in ensuring the safety of our children?
What I have learned over the past three and a half years of being on the school board is that the role of a school board member is heavily based on policy. So what we can do is set policy regarding safety and security. One of the biggest things that we just did was hire a director of safety and security. That's a huge accomplishment for this district, especially this size. It's been needed for a very long time, and we can listen. We can listen to our director of safety and security when he tells us what we need to do to keep our kids safe. I was actually at South Intermediate School yesterday, and when I was there, I walked in and I saw our SSOs, our school safety officers, standing right there. And one of them, I happen to know, his son went to school with my boys, and he's retired state police. So that's something that we can do as school board members. We can put qualified SSOs into our buildings, people that are walking the halls, that our students see and feel safe, knowing that they're there. So that was, that was a really great morning for me yesterday, to be able to see that and know that I played a role as a school director in implementing the policy to hire these SSOs.
Okay. The next question is a two-part question, okay? So closing a school is a hard decision to make, as you know.
Yes.
So what factors, the first part, what factors should be considered when you have to vote on a closure? And the second part is the opposite. What factors should not be considered when you have to vote on a closure?
So, again, as you know, living in Scranton, closing schools is a topic that has been discussed for several years. I struggle with this, because our neighborhood schools are the cornerstones of our neighborhoods, and there's a lot of evidence to show that when you close a neighborhood school, that neighborhood deteriorates. We have a lot of, a lot of communities within Scranton who walk to school, parents who don't have transportation. So all of those factors need to be considered when you're looking at school closures. We need to look at, is there going to be learning loss associated with that? But then again, as a school board member, you also have to, I'm often reminded of this by my colleagues, you have to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars. So you have to weigh that against a decision to close a school. We recently commissioned a building reconfiguration committee. The current board has done this, and it's composed of stakeholders, the taxpayers, the central administration, our teachers, parents. And they are currently looking at our Scranton School District buildings, and they're going to bring back their recommendations and suggestions. And I think that that's a very important piece, that we need to get that community input. I don't think just a board can sit there and say, we need to close this school or not. We need to listen to our community. I look forward to seeing what they have to say, because the board I'm on now, and then when the board changes, the new board, is going to have to make some really difficult decisions moving forward.
Okay. The next question, lots of questions come up about transportation. And all I'm talking about here is getting the kids back and forth to school. That's it, okay?
Yep.
Again, a two-part question. Discuss any changes you believe are needed to the district's policies on transportation for students. And then again, what factors need to be considered when you're voting for change? So what needs to be changed, and what should you consider?
Well, currently, our reimbursements are based on the distance that a student is from a school. So I think our current policy is that any student that lives more than a mile and a half away from a school is provided transportation. So in doing that, there are circumstances where parents have come to us, and they have said, this could be considered a hazardous route, even though we're less than a mile from the school. At that point, we do have a supervisor of transportation and her staff, and they go and evaluate that route. The state also evaluates that route. So anything like that that's brought to our attention, we absolutely take a look at, and then those determinations are made, you know, whether that child would be provided with transportation. It's a tough one, because again, we're looking at neighborhood schools. So you go back to, if we're going to close neighborhood schools, do we need to then look at the transportation and how far we're going to bus students? So as a, as a board member's role, again, that's where policy comes into place. And we would have to look at all factors to determine if we need to change that policy. And then we also have to look at our budget and the bottom line to see how that would affect us, because we're not being reimbursed for those students that are within that mile and a half.
Okay. The next topic overall is, the general topic is on banning something, okay? And again, a two-part question. What should go into a process or a decision if a call to ban books, critical race theory, anything, banning anything, is floated before the school board, coming from any direction, wherever that might be? So what goes into your decision-making process on that? And then the second question that I have is, are these decisions up to the board?
Well, I'm going to answer your second part first. I'm the, the daughter of a retired public school English teacher. So my mother would say to me that it is not within my purview to ban any books or any piece of curriculum. That would be determined by our faculty, and that's why we have a faculty. I would agree with my mother on that, too. I don't think it's within my purview to impress any of my, my thoughts, my values, my religion on curriculum. We have an amazing faculty in the Scranton School District. I think our teachers need the freedom to teach, and our students need the freedom to learn. So I would leave that in their hands.
Okay. I have one more question for you.
Okay.
It's got a little bit of an intro.
Okay.
And then the question at the end.
Okay.
Okay. Per legislation that was passed in April of 2022, the Pennsylvania Department of Education must integrate culturally relevant and sustaining education competencies into educator, preparation, induction, and continuing professional development programs no later than the 23-24 academic year. So this is about teacher learning. There are nine competencies, I'm not going to read them all, they have really long names, but they deter, they deal with things like your cultural lens, culturally relevant learning, microaggressions, it's about things like that. So two questions.
Okay.
What impact does or will this have on our teachers and our students?
Okay.
And then the other part, what role does the school board play in having to ensure compliance with this Pennsylvania law?
Okay. So I think I got all of that.
Okay.
The first thing we're talking about is what, what role will this?
No, what impact would it have?
What impact would it have? Okay. I think that it would have a very positive impact on our faculty and our staff. We need to provide them with every opportunity to learn everything they can about any kind of of systemic barriers that could prohibit them from, from positively influencing a student or their teachings. So to me, I, I believe that we, we need to do all of that. We would need to work, and I think this is to answer the second part, we would need to work within, with, with the Scranton Federation of Teachers, within their collective bargaining agreement. We would need to make sure that we provide them that time. They, they need those days to learn, because they're, they're the ones in front of our children. They're the ones who are, are doing the hard work. So my role as a school board member would be to make, to ensure that they have every opportunity to learn what they need to do to teach our children.
Okay. Tara, that's all the questions that I have for you.
Okay, okay.
But you do have two minutes to give a closing statement.
Okay.
And you can talk to the voters about your campaign, about your platform, or about any topic that we haven't already covered, okay?
So my name is Tara Yanni, and I am the proud parent of two graduates of Scranton, the Scranton Public School District. I have no higher political aspirations, so I'm putting that right out there now. You will never see me come before you and say, I am running for something else. This is it. I, three and a half years ago, I was sitting at my kitchen table, and I think I was complaining about something with the school district, and my husband looked at me and said, well, then maybe you should run for school board. And I said, well, I don't know how to do that, I'm not a politician. So on my campaign signs, it says, I am a parent, not a politician. I, I stick to that. I'm, I'm really proud of how much I've learned in, in the past three and a half years and how well I've worked with the team that I'm currently on the board with. I feel like we have come out of financial recovery, and we still have a really long way to go. I want to continue to work with this team and help to move us forward. We need to continue to follow our amended recovery plan, but we've made so much progress, and I, I would hate to see us lose any of that. So that, that's really why I'm rerunning, and I, I'm not going to lie. I thought long and hard about it, because as we discussed, it's, it's a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of energy, but there's a big learning curve. So I've, I've put in that time and energy, so I'd like to see it, see it through. I want to be able to pay it forward for the district that's helped both of my children and, and their successes to date in life. So that, that's really why I'm sitting here.
All right. That concludes our time with Tara Yanni. Tara, thank you so much for joining us today, and I want to remind voters that Tara is cross-filled on both the Republican and the Democratic ballots for the primary election, so voters in both parties will be able to cast their ballot for her on May 16th, and thank you again for your time today.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and the Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service at the University of Scranton and ECTV, thank you so much for watching these interviews with the candidate for Scranton School Director. We hope that you remember to vote on Election Day, May 16th, and don't forget that a, a small group of dedicated citizens can change the world. So thank you for your time and attention.